I'd like to call the Boxborough Planning Board meeting to order at 7:00 PM on September 3rd, 2025. This meeting is being conducted via Zoom and as always it can be accessed through the agenda using the link at the bottom or at the bottom of the page or using the direct phone call in line as well. If you're not using a computer. So I'll start out by taking a roll call of the members of the board. As I see you, Mark White.
Wait, present.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz present.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty present.
And Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi present.
And Berner present. Thank you. So at this time, we'd like to, oops, funny pop up. Open up for any public comment that there might be regarding any of the items that are not currently listed on the agenda. So if you do have a comment about something other than what's posted, then please use the raise hand function or star nine also works if you're on your phone. Okay, and I'm not seeing any public comment at this time. Okay, 7:02. That's not a hearing, so we could potentially go right into that, right Alec? Okay, so. I know that Green International has joined us this evening to present a kind of a simplified version of the report with their recommendations and stuff for the traffic comprehensive traffic study. So I'm going to, Alec, I'll turn it over to you so you can introduce our team and then you can then turn it on over to them.
Great. Thank you Rebecca and thank you to the board and thank you to the members of the public and thank you to Green International. We've been pretty encumbered with a lot of different applications, a lot of bylaws going on. So Green International has been very patient, waiting for the opportunity to come back before the board. We received, we received one round of comments and feedback from one individual, but not, not a full robust amount. And we, we decided as a team it would be best to have them come back, re-present the, the findings and recommendations. And following this meeting, the board will have until Friday evening to provide us any feedback, any comments. And at that time Corinne and Julianne will take the, the recommendations back, finalize the report and deliver their work product. But Corinne, Julianne, thank you as always for being here. Thank you for your work thus far and I look forward to hearing your presentation.
Okay, thank you Alec. So we, we did put together a little updated version of the presentation, which I believe you've seen. Before we get into the proposed conditions, because it has been a little bit of a while. We thought we'd just do a very quick recap of what we found from the existing conditions. So Julianne's going to go through that real quick and then I'll get into some of our draft proposed conditions. And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, at this time it is a draft, just because we're hoping to get some feedback before we wrap things up and finalize that, that study for you. So there, it's still a little bit of a work in progress in terms of the recommendations, just so that we can hopefully incorporate any feedback from the town. Thank you. And with that, I'll let Julianne kind of take it away just for the, the existing conditions recap and, and overview of where we've been.
Yeah, great. Thank you Corinne. Thank you Alec. Hope everybody had a nice long weekend and glad to be back covering the study, so. All right. So just a little overview of what we're going to be focusing on today is just keep it more high level of the analysis portion. And then going into the background development projects that were part of our analysis. Ultimately, what are findings in our conceptual plans and what our recommendations are going to be? And yeah, a little intro. I'm Julianne. I'm a transportation planner at Green and Corinne is our transportation planning department manager. Excuse me. So what our analysis included was first conducting our site visit to evaluate the existing conditions, including just overall roadway network. We collected traffic count data at the 11 study intersections, including ATR counts along the Route 111 corridor. So as you can see here, like this map on the right, our study area was from the west Route 111 at the Swanson Road intersection. It continued east to Route 111 at the Liberty Square Road intersection. And we also had the lone study intersection, the Taylor Street and Health Road, that's technically in Littleton, Mass. But so that's an overview of our study area. We also collected the site distance information. We looked at five years for crash history at each study intersection. Ultimately, what the conditions are going to look like in the future. And then getting more into the impacts of the proposed background developments. So the four background developments that we looked at was the church that's proposed all the way to the west side of the study area located at 60 Codman Hill Road. Then there's a larger research manufacturing development at 244 Adams Place. The large research center at 1414 Massachusetts Ave. And then the very large, the park development off of Swanson Road. In, in total, with those four developments, it's estimated that they would generate during the morning 1,592 new trips during the afternoon peak hour, 1,522 new trips. And on an average day, these four developments would generate 15,800 new daily trips. And one of the issues that we observed more frequently in the field was site distance being hindered, which ultimately ends up contributing to being a safety issue. So there's two different types of site distance that we evaluated. There's the intersection site distance, which is all about the person waiting to enter or cross the intersection in the safe distance they need to be able to make that maneuver. Versus the stopping site distance is all about the person on the main line and the distance they need to be able to safely stop or somebody at the intersection itself. So this picture over here on the right, you have a clear site triangle versus the obstructed site triangle. And when we're in the field, we noticed there was a lot of obstructed site triangles. So down here, this obstruction could be anything for like a tree too close to the edge of the roadway, utility pole, et cetera. So just a little overview of how to look at these figures is these are our site triangles here. Our green site triangles represent the stopping site distance for vehicles on Route 111. And then our red triangles are the intersection site distance from people trying to cross or turn from the side streets into the intersection.
I'm sorry, Julianne, Rebecca, can I just ask a question?
Yeah, please go ahead, Rich.
Can you just go back one slide please? I'm trying to understand site distance, site stopping distance. Can you just kind of give me the, the 101 version of that?
Yeah, sure thing. Do you feel like? So when I think of intersection site distance, I feel like a good example would be if we're looking at this aerial, if I'm the vehicle trying to exit Codman Hill Road, how far can I look right up Route 111? And how far can I look up left Route 111? And if that would meet that minimum distance that's required?
And from, from what point? That's that decision point you were noting on the graphic before?
Yes, so for example, the decision point here is you take it from the stop bar location and it's three and a half feet. So if you're, you want to be lowered to the ground, so it's more of a conservative analysis if you're in more of like a sedan type vehicle. So that would be the point where we took our intersection site distance.
Okay, just to clarify, that's three and a half feet high off the ground.
Yes.
Because you're sitting. So basically it's from that point of view as opposed to, you know, somebody standing or somebody in a truck where you might be able to see a little bit further.
All right, three and a half feet off the ground at the stop line.
Yeah.
Okay. And the stopping site distance is what then? That's the main thoroughfare?
Yes. So that would be vehicles traveling, traveling on Route 111. And then at what point can they see hypothetically if somebody was waiting at that stop line?
Okay.
For me, the direction.
Okay.
And just to kind of add a little bit, I, the way I think about it is intersection site distance is kind of an operational consideration. You know, can they see someone coming long enough that they feel comfortable making that turn? And stopping site distance is really a safety issue where if they're already in the road, are they going to get hit because the person didn't see them and can they stop in time? So that's a little bit of a distinction there. And for that reason, you know, stopping site distance is usually a shorter distance than the intersection site distance. And so intersection site distance is a little bit harder to meet, but it's, it's more of an operational consideration. Whereas stopping site distance is a little bit more of a safety concern.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Corinne. So here at the Route 111 at Swanson Road and Codman Hill Road, the intersection site distance wasn't met for three out of the four directions that were being faced. And the stopping site distance wasn't met for three out of the four that were measured. And then we go to Route 111 at the 495 southbound ramps. Here, the intersection site distance was fine. However, the stopping site distance for Route 111 approaching from the west does not meet the minimum. If I recall, I believe it was, is where it starts to, the grade starts to go up. And I believe that is what was contributing to not meeting the requirement. And then we go to Route 111 at the 495 northbound ramps. And intersection site distance and stopping site distance wasn't issue here. All the minimum requirements were met. Okay. And then Route 111 at Adams Place West across from the mobile gas station driveway. The intersection site distance wasn't, minimum wasn't met for Adams Place West facing east, being blocked by these trees here at the corner. And then similarly for the stopping site distance, Route 111 approaching from the east was also being blocked by these trees at this corner of the intersection. And this issue was very prevalent here at the Route 111 at Adams Place East at Paddock Lane. For the intersection site distance, three out of the four don't meet the minimum requirement. And same thing for the stopping site distance, three out of the four don't meet the minimum requirement. And as you can see here, these street trees or vegetation along the roadway are very close hindering the intersection. And stopping site distance for Adams Place and the Paddock Lane approach. And then Route 111 at Hill Road and Boroughs Road. Same thing, intersection site distance, three out of the four didn't meet the minimum requirements. And stopping site distance, three out of the four didn't meet the minimum requirements. And similar here at the northwest corner of the intersection, there was a swath of trees that was greatly affecting your ability to look from Hill Road. And similarly for Boroughs Road, more prominently when you're facing east or approaching from the east. And then Route 111 at Middle Road and Stowe Road. Intersection site distance was only not met for being on Middle Road facing east with the trees contributing to that. However, the stopping site distance did not meet the minimum requirements for any of the four measurement points for if you're on Route 111 approaching Middle Road or approaching Stowe Road. And by the time we get to this point out of Route 111, it's a lot more flat, so grade isn't as much of a contributing factor. So as you'll see here, the site distance for the intersection stopping site distance from the police driveway is actually very good. There's no problems there. And then Route 111 at the school exit in the fire department driveway. Same thing, intersection site distance and stopping site distance were an issue at these intersections. And we also have Route 111 at Liberty Square Road and Summer Road. The intersection site distance always didn't meet the minimum requirement when you're on Liberty Square Road facing west. And for the stopping site distance, didn't meet the minimum requirement for Liberty Square Road or Summer Road approaching from the west. And that was also due to these trees here on the edge of the roadway. And then lastly, we have our intersection in Littleton, Mass, the Taylor Street at Hill Road. The intersection site distance for Hill Road facing north wasn't, didn't meet the minimum requirements. And the stopping site distance being on Taylor Street approaching from the south didn't meet the minimum requirements. So also at each of our study intersections, we looked at the crash history to see if we could identify any trends looking at reported crashes over a five-year timeframe from 2017 to 2021. And then from there, once we have our traffic count data, we're able to calculate an intersection crash rate, which takes into the number of vehicles entering and exiting intersection and comparing that to the number of crashes over that five-year timeframe. And with that being said, the only intersection that had a intersection crash rate higher than Mass District 3 was the Adams Place West and the Mobile Gas Station driveway. And we also looked at the overall Route 111 quarter, the segment, to see if the roadway itself had a crash rate higher than what you expect. And for roadways classified as urban collectors, it also had a crash rate that was lower than an average urban collector segment. So here we, there's a lot of synchro information. We threw it at you guys last time for intersection capacity. So we just broke it down where we're just going to be looking at the results for the overall intersection. So this is, this table is focusing on the AM peak hour. So there were four conditions that we analyzed, one being the existing condition. How are the intersections operating right now? And then 11 years in the future, the 2035 no build. What happens if none of those proposed developments are created? And it's just the natural increase in traffic volumes over that period of time? And then there was the first build condition. So build if all of those proposed developments end up happening and all those additional volumes are added to the roadway network. However, if there was no mitigation done. And then our fourth condition was the build condition, but with mitigation. So this part is where our recommendations come in. So for our AM peak hour, most notably, you'll see here at the Adams Place West and Mobile Gas Station, the developments at the 114 Mass Ave and the 244 Adams Place had a large increase in traffic that were going to be exiting or proposed to exit from Adams Place West. And that's why you see this significant increase in the delay from the no build to the build condition. So with our proposed mitigation for this, if we converted it to, from a two-way stop control to a signalized intersection, would decrease that delay to a level of service E, but with a 42.2 second delay. Also notably, you'll see here, we have Adams Place East at Paddock Lane here twice. And under the build, no mitigation, same thing, those developments at the Mass Ave development and the 244 Adams Place development. That increase in traffic increasing the overall intersection delay. But two of our recommendations, we had two recommendations at this intersection. One of the proposed mitigations was installing a roundabout. And the other proposed mitigation was converting it to a signalized intersection. So either one of these mitigation strategies decreased the intersection delay from a level of service D with no mitigation to a level of service B.
I think we have another question.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, real quickly, I just, so there's, there's obviously a set of assumptions you used. I'm just, I'm looking at the 2016, like it's like 10 times the next highest number, maybe not quite 10 times. It goes from five to 201. That. So and that's the build conditions, no mitigation. So there. Are you seeing numbers like 200 in intersections when you do it like this? That there's nothing that comes close to that on this page, right?
Right. So I'll say one thing, the modeling software that we use sometimes doesn't handle high volumes quite as accurately. So essentially what you're seeing is that it's congested and it's, it's past the point of congestion. And so whether or not it'll actually be 201 seconds, we can't, you know, say with a huge degree of accuracy, but what we can say is that it's over the capacity. So what, what that means is it's not processing vehicles quickly. So then the delay just gets added up a lot. So whenever F is basically a failure condition. You do see it a lot in Eastern Mass during rush hours, so it's, it's not entirely uncommon. You know, especially the closer you get to Boston, obviously you can imagine some intersections there. You might sit there for 200 seconds waiting to get through an intersection. Whether that actual number 201 seconds is, is perfectly accurate. I wouldn't put a ton of weight on that, but what it does say is that the intersection itself is over capacity. So it's, you're, you're going to be waiting longer, I believe. You know, F is, is anything, I'm not sure, I, I don't recall the exact threshold off the top of my head, but certainly anything longer than a minute is going to be an F if you're waiting, you know, longer than a minute to get through the intersection. And, and also because this is an un-signalized intersection, that is going to be driven by the side street approach as opposed to obviously on the main line where it's just free, free flow. So.
Okay. All right. So pay attention to the colors, not the point six or point eight.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, and especially I, I'm not sure that we see that, that here, but PM is going to be worse. But some, sometimes once you hit an F, it can go up quite high quite quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you Corinne. That's a really good point, especially we do see that in the PM at the study intersections too. So here at the Adams Place East under the PM peak hour, Paddock Lane is estimating that it would have over 450 second delay. But under mitigation strategy, if we make it a roundabout or a signalized intersection, then overall it's anticipated that it would bring the level of service to a level of service C. Another thing I want to point out.
Can I interrupt one minute more? I'm so sorry.
Of course.
This is happening, but Mark White, you had a question before we move on?
Yeah, yeah, I did. So what you're talking about these, these one, two, three lines at Adams Place, it would be either or situations, is that correct? You'd either choose a signalized intersection out at the entrance, the current entrance to Adams Place. Or option B would move, have that only inbound and then have all outbound traffic exiting across from Paddock Lane. And then the choice there is a rotary or a signalized intersection. There would be two signalized intersections. It would be either or. Is that correct?
That, yes, that's correct. So you're referring to closing Adams Place West entirely?
Well, it looked like that because how are you going to get cars to exit at Adams Place West without the signal?
Yeah, exactly.
Looked like you had two lanes coming out of the road Adams Place East, one turning right and one turning left. So that made me think that you were just directing all outbound traffic out that way and all inbound and all inbounded at the west entrance and all outbound at the east.
That's correct, although you'd still have people exiting the mobile.
Okay, so that's the other side though. So, okay. All right. Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to, to know.
Thank you. So here at Route 111 for the no build, you'll see that it's a fine level of service. But under the no mitigation condition, that park at Beaver Brook contributing so much additional traffic through the intersection greatly decreased or increased seat delay, decreased the level of service. So by just proposing some intersection retiming under our mitigation condition, able to bring that level of service back to a level of service B. Corinne, are you able to concept please?
And with that, we'll kind of start to get into a little bit of what we're proposing for the different locations. So just to kind of give a brief high-level overview, the six different sort of control scenarios we're looking at are intersection retiming for Swanson Road at Codman Hill Road. That, you know, there's already a signal in place there, so we didn't want to do any major lane shifting or addition of new lanes or anything like that. An intersection realignment for Liberty Square Road at Summer Road to help address some of the site distance concerns. And also kind of that skewed intersection configuration that you see out there today. And then options three and four, which are the two different traffic control types for Adams Place East and Paddock Lane. One of them would be a signalized intersection, one of them would be a roundabout alternative. One thing I do want to mention, and we'll kind of get a little bit into this later. For signalized intersections, there's some criteria that have to be met with respect to the traffic volumes at, at that location. And Mass DOT, for example, has very strict criteria that they won't install an inner, a signalized intersection unless there are high volumes of traffic for eight hours over the course of the day. You know, for a town on location, you're not bound to that necessarily. But there are still other criteria that need to be met for a signalized intersection to be in place, which you won't necessarily see until those developments go online. And then finally, the intersection realignment of Taylor Street at Hill Road and a fire department emergency vehicle hybrid beacon for the fire department driveway. So with that, we'll kind of get into the first location. This is existing conditions. Route 111, Swanson Road and Codman Hill Road from the northeast corner. So you know, some of the advantages, obviously, you know, you're not adding any lanes or anything like that. So you don't, you're not expanding the roadway width or taking any right of way. That generally keeps the cost of the alternative low. We looked at doing everything within the existing. We looked at doing everything within the existing, um, traffic signal equipment configuration. So we're not adding any new phases or signal heads or anything like that. Um. It could be implemented in a relatively short period of time following mass duty coordination approval. Um, and, you know, based on what we found, it could significantly reduce the intersection delay. With those future volumes in place, um. And overall, you know, approved, improved levels of service and, and delays, so, um. That's, that's our recommendation for the Route one eleven at Swanson Hill, just, just involves. Giving a little bit more time to the new approaches as they get more traffic coming online. Um, and, and coordination with the, um. The intersections at the four ninety-five interchange. Uh, but it would require some mast D O T approval. So our next recommendation, which is a little bit more involved, is the Liberty Square Road at Summer Road intersection realignment. So what we're looking to do here is kind of to the best of our ability tee up. Some of these approaches without getting into significant right-of-way issues, um, or. Uh, and tighten up some of the, the intersection curvature to create more of a formalized, um. Intersection, I will say we were a little bit restricted, you can see, um. On this north, northern leg, we have some gore markings rather than shrink the roadway there. Um, because we were looking at truck turns. And in order for trucks to make that turn, they do still need. Uh, some of that pavement area, so, you know, as much as we'd love to say shrink it down, um, even more and make those turns slower. We did find that we needed them, um, in order for trucks to kind of make that turn, they still need some of that space, but we wanted intersection markings to. Guide cars into the narrower area, help slow things down and provide more of a defined, um, a. Approach for that leg, uh, and then also. Um, kind of tee up some of the exit. Exiting vehicles from that approach and, and shift the stop bar up closer so that they, you know, they're not trying to look from quite so far back. Um, and help some of the sight just instance concern. So that was, this is kind of our primary. Um, approach here is to tighten it up as much as we can. Um, in order to, you know, slow vehicles down to the extent possible while they're taking these turns. Um, and hopefully improve some of those sight distance concerns on the southbound approach. Um, and, uh, you know, I can take questions now, or, or we can kind of just go through and take questions later, however you guys want to do it. Um, but again, some of the advantages for this is to reduce the confusion. Um, and create a little bit more distinction, improve the limit site sites potential to reduce. Um, speed of traffic and it's not. Um. You know, it's still accommodate heavy vehicle movements, um, there is some potential for right-of-way on this corner. Um. It's based on what we found from sort of our GIS, we did not do a full survey, so. It does seem like the, the survey bounds may be a little bit further out, but that's something that you'd want to kind of consider and, and take a closer look at. Um, with this to, where this to go into construction, um, and. Um, if you wanted to add pedestrian or bicycle accommodations, you know, that would definitely include. Um. Potentially, it's either some right-of-way or environmental impacts on the south side. Um, here, we didn't recommend that because there's nothing existing in the area. Um, but I know there was some desire for sort of a corridor wide. Um, bicycle accommodation, so we are kind of looking at that from a high level permitting impact. Um, but that, that would mostly be, um, a stormwater issue due to. Um, the increase of impervious area. Um, if, if you were to kind of stay on the south side, and if you were to include the, the north side, you're probably looking at proper. Pretty extensive property impacts as well.
Thank you, Corin, I'm gonna, um, pause for a moment and just ask, um, for, we have, see a couple of hands up, so Mark White, go ahead.
On this one, um, this one I find a little, I mean, the other ones are kind of more digestible, but this one has got me a little bit. Um, so, first of all, the, what? How does this intersection rank for accidents currently?
So, this wasn't, you know, below the statewide average. Um, most of the intersections are below the statewide average, um, except with, you know, with the exceptions. With the exception of the Adams Place intersection, um, so it's not, it's not a current issue. Um, with respect to accidents. Um, there will be an increase, you know, of traffic in this area with the developments going in, so I know that that's still a concern. Um, and, and there was pretty restricted site, site distance, but no, the, the crash rate was not above average.
Okay, so. Right now it's not a problem, and I'm going to guess that the, I mean. Certainly I agree with the shifting the stop bars forward, I mean, that, that makes all kinds of sense, I mean, it's terrible to have to stop. You know, so far back that you can't see what's, what's coming around the corner, so that's easy. The only thing I think I have a problem with this is this tightened up exit from one eleven. North onto Liberty Square Road. Um, because traffic's moving pretty quickly down one eleven at that point, and they tend to exit. Pretty quickly onto Liberty Square Road, you're trying to slow it down. But that's just in turn going to serve to slow down Route one eleven. And then you got people trying to get out. Uh, across the way from Summer Road and that slowdown makes it a lot harder to get out if somebody's. All of a sudden slamming on their brakes to take a right-hand turn rather than sailing. You know, taking the right-hand turn, you know, quickly. So. Uh. Personally, I don't like that solution, although the, you did modify it to show the, uh, the gore markings. Which kind of makes it so that you can just make the turn anyway. And, 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 so, so I, I don't know. I don't want to find out how that works, I guess, the, the hard way. And, uh, the other question I have is, you're talking about make trucks making turns off of one eleven and onto Liberty Square Road, but you're not talking about trucks making this. Turn out of Liberty Square Road onto one eleven. Uh, those trucks, if they gotta take a right. That's a, that's a tough corner. To make right there, and you haven't really addressed that, I mean, there's no way short of shaving that back hard that they're gonna. Make a swing without going into the opposite lane. Right, I've seen trucks do it.
You, you're, you're talking about the, the southbound right-hand turn?
Uh, southbound right-hand turn, yes.
Yeah, so we didn't shrink that one up, um, we, you know, when we looked at the truck turning movements, it looked like it was. Um, kind of feasible under the existing geometry, and so that, um, you know, we. That, that corner is essentially proposed to remain as is. Um, with respect to the right-hand turns coming on to Liberty Square Road, I guess. A couple of things, it is still a fairly wide turn, especially with the gore markings. But generally speaking, you don't want traffic going super fast through a location where people are turning off. Um, because you want them to slow down to see people as they're approaching to make those turns on. Um, or to be able to stop if someone's on the road. Um, especially with the two intersections in such close proximity to each other. Um, I guess, generally speaking. You know, that, that would. You, you want them, you, you should walk them a little bit slower through this location rather than. Than speeding to make that right, because you might have people coming in from the south that need to make those turns into the roadway as well. That, um. You know, rather than having someone fly up, but, or, or will be able to stop in order for them to make those turns in.
It also quickly turns into a thirty and then into a twenty school zone, so. I don't know that, like, um, high speed through that zone is, is good. Um. Did that answer your question, Mark? Or did, can I move on to Chris?
Well, i- it's, it's not so much a question, I'm just expressing a concern with, with, with how that might operate in, in reality, I, it. They may be, I mean, if you were to put. Cones there for a trial run or something like that, some way of experimenting to see what happens. Cause, I mean, I do those intersections all the time, and I, I lived on Liberty Square Road for thirty years and. I've come in and out of that intersection more times than you can count, and so. Uh.
And, and I will say, like, these are very concept level plans, you know, they're not construction drawings or documents at this time. Um, so this would all get, get kind of refined under that process. Um. But yeah, I, you know, there's nothing preventing future studies or, or evaluation if, if that's something that, um. You would want in order to sort of become comfortable with the idea, but I guess I just, I would again make the case that, um. You know, it is, it is still a pretty wide turn.
Yeah, I think if we drop the speed limit at that point, maybe that would be, make more sense, but. Um, alright, so, sorry, keep, keep going.
Um, I think Chris had a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was, um, I'm just unfamiliar with some of the acronyms, so I was just trying to make sure I. Know what I'm looking at, so what's the DBYL and SWL?
Yeah, no, sorry, sorry about that, um, for not explaining, those are just labels, um, solid white line, double yellow line.
Okay.
Stop line, um, that's, that's a little bit of, uh, uh, traffic plan acronym.
Okay, that works, and the, the green on this, is that all area where there's current pavement?
Yes, exactly, that's, that's where we're proposing to kind of tighten up the road where we can.
Okay, I think so, so living on Liberty Square for years. I think the most difficult turn to make is if you're heading eastbound on one eleven and then going north. Up to it, because you have, you, that's like a eighty-five degree turn.
Turn, yep, yep.
Yeah, so you have to basically do a full stop or a almost full stop. Uh, depending on how good your suspension is, so that's. Um, that's a tricky one, or going between Liberty Square and Summer. That's where.
Making that left and right or right and left.
Yeah, so that's when seeing that, seeing the headline of realigning, like, okay, what are you gonna do here? Cause isn't that somebody's house? Um, that's, that woods, so I'm not sure what, what is owned by who and how much of that could be smooth, so I would actually be thinking. Like the Summer Road part where the green is filling in pavement. I would think the opposite to. Try to get the, you know, the, the two angles that are far apart, try to get them a little bit tilted towards each other.
So I, I think what the, the reason that we're doing it the other way is that you're, you can't, with this alignment, you can't get a straight across.
No, it's.
And so your options are to either have it be a quasi. Where the people are trying to speed through straight. Which, which is not particularly safe or create a more formal separation. Where there's a clear left turn and a clear right turn and sort of clear decision points and a little bit of space in the middle. And so that's why we're shifting, you know, if we could align it straight across, you know, you're right, that, that would be better. Um, but short of taking this person's house or, or taking significant land, which if that's, if that's something that. The board is interested in, in pursuing or looking, looking at, we can certainly. Um, go with something that's like that, but short of actually doing that and formalizing a four-way intersection at this location. What you want to do then is separate them more so you don't get into this sort of like a. Unofficial throughway situation.
Okay, yeah, I, I can see it striking the balance up, if you can't actually get it straight across.
It's better to do two separates, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess, so I would go back to, I think, what Mark mentioned, that, um. If this intersection is actually has a lower crash rate than you would expect. Um, that might mean it's a, this should be lower on the priority list of, of, uh. Things that would actually need to get addressed. And I think most of the. Most of the development under that is kind of the cause for the consideration here, and most of that is towards, more towards the, um. The west, the west end, uh, the ones where, you know, it looks like it's going to take three minutes to, to turn. So, I, I think those probably would need priority first.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for, thanks for explaining, because I wasn't a hundred percent sure what I was looking at.
No problem. Um. Are there any other questions before we move on?
Uh, no, you can go, uh, continue, please.
Okay, um, so this is the signalized intersection alternative for Adams Place East and Paddock Lane. Um, and as, you know, previously mentioned, it would sort of reroute the exit onto the signalized location. Um, so that you're not pumping a bunch of traffic into this unsignalized intersection that's. Um, having some, some difficulty, um, to the west, and that would be an entrance. Um, we would. Introduce a, a right turn. You know, a formalized right turn only lane for that entrance. Um, before it narrows up into the Adams Place East intersection. Um, and this could likely be, you know, controlled with a, a typical, um, form. For mast arm, um, signalized approach, so each approach would get their own mast arm. Um, you have a decent amount of right-of-way where that wouldn't really be a concern. It would certainly improve the overall intersection operations. Um, compared to the future with no mitigation, um, it has the potential to reduce some of the crash severity and frequency. Um, and. You know, having said that, it's not that, you know, it's not going to be the cheapest option, um. And you would need kind of additional traffic volumes. Outside of the scope of what we collected in the study to determine whether it would meet an eight-hour signal warrant, which is what, um. Mast dot requires for, for signalized intersections, um. So, and, and as we said, had, had mentioned, you know. We do anticipate that the traffic volumes could exceed those minimum requirements under future conditions. Um, but they do not under the existing conditions, so there might be some lag in terms of when. Um, you're able to get something like that approved. Um, and I believe the traffic studies also only included data for the peak hours, so what that means is it's, you know. They, they don't even have data for the full eight-hour period. Um, so you would need to do kind of additional studies and analysis to get that approved. Uh, through Mast dot, um, in order to justify the need for traffic signals. Um, it does have, uh, you know, a fairly moderate project cost and construction time, um. I'll get a little bit into some of the distinctions with roundabouts, um, and traffic signals going forward. I'll say in our experience, I know, you know, a lot of towns are a lot more comfortable with traffic signals than roundabouts just because of. Experience, right, um, everyone's experience with traffic signals and not everyone has a ton of experience with roundabout, but we have. Um. Particularly in the last year or two. Um, you know, before we, I just, I want to say this before we get everyone's hope up with a signalized intersection. Um, received a lot of pushback from mast DOT, they're leaning pretty heavily into roundabout alternatives. Um, with their, um, new. Um, ice process that they've introduced, which is an intersection control evaluation process. Um, that's been added to kind of their normal decision-making tree. Um, so this, you know, it, it would certainly improve operations, it's, it's fairly straightforward, it doesn't require, you know, takings, it doesn't require. Um, adding additional pavement or moving, um. You know. Moving a lot of things around or a lot of permitting or, or things like that, but, um. I, I can't make the promise that they would allow this as an option. Uh, but it does work great in terms of improving the operations at this location. Um, Alec?
Go ahead, Alec.
Thank you, um, so it sounds like this might not be a viable solution, but i- if we were to make the assumption that it was a viable solution. That Mast D O T would consider, um, in your experience, does Mast D O T accept projected increases? Let's say at the time of approval, let's say the planning board approved an application at this intersection or shortly thereafter. Would they accept those projected increases, or would we need to first see the project built? And then they would look to, to time it out with the actual increase.
So we have. Uh, for other projects, um, development projects, they have accepted. Pro- uh, projected volumes, um. That, yeah, yes, long story short, yes, they would accept that, um. As, as a potential, I guess, it would require like. I, I think I mentioned, you know, the traffic studies that we've already got for these developments include peak hour projections. And so there would need to be a little bit more work done to project it out further over the course of the day. Um, because right now, you know, even, even if those are two-hour peaks in the morning and the afternoon, that's only four hours. Um, so. It, it would require a little bit more, um. From, from probably coordination with whoever the developer is. Um, to get some of that information available, but yes, Mast dot has allowed projected volumes for that consideration.
Thank you, Corin, and for the board, I'll just highlight, so given the history with this site and the expectation that more applications are going to come down the line at some point. Um, this would be a recommendation that if, if it stays in the plan, I would recommend, um, we pursue with future applicants. Um, this would be a recommendation that if it, if it stays in the plan, I would recommend, um, we pursue with future applicants. Have them do the, the projections, have them do the additional research. Um, and then consider at the time of any decision whether it would be a, a possible approach.
Thanks, Alec. Um, so I'm just noting the time is seven fifty-one. We do have another posted hearing that's, um, posted for seven fifty. So I'd just like to go through and just, um, wrap up the presentation is, if we can, so that we can turn it over to additional board members' questions.
Sure, um, so I'll just kind of, you know, this one, I, I think by now you've kind of seen most of them. Um, but this would be a, a different roundabout alternative, and this one we do show, uh, two-way traffic at the Adams Place West, but it could kind of. It honestly, that's one of the things we'd like some feedback on, um. Uh, we could change the approach so that we're pushing more of the traffic out towards, um, the roundabout as well. Um, and, and keep that as an entrance only, but in this approach, you'd only have a one-lane approach going into the roundabout as opposed to the two-lane approach. Uh, and so that's why we show the exiting traffic still at this west location as well. Uh, but then you would still have some, some of the, um, similar traffic congestion at this location. Rich?
Yeah, so.
Can we just try to, I just wanna get through this if we can, and then if we need to go back and look at it slides again, we can back it up a little bit. I just wanna make sure we just get through the presentations. We have consultants and stuff here also waiting, um, on our dollar, so I just wanna make sure we're moving it through.
Sure, um, and then this is, you know, the intersection realignment for Taylor Street at Hill Road in Littleton, Mass. Um, one of the nice things here is that you do have, um, a good amount of right of way on the southern corner in order to sort of. Really tee up the intersection and change the geometry, so it functions more as a traditional T-intersection. Uh, which would greatly improve the, the sightlines at this location, make it, um. You know, a- again, more of a traditional T-intersection, um, reduce speeds going around the corner, um, and improve the sightlines. Um, and finally, this is the Boxborough Fire Department Emergency Vehicle Hybrid Beacon. Um, which we'd recommend for the, um, entrance for the fire department onto. Um, one eleven, and in addition to that, what we show is kind of. Um, right now, this is a really wide, open, expansive section of pavement, which is not the most pedestrian-friendly. Um, approach, especially given that it's directly across the street from a school. Um, so we really wanted to address that and, and make that a much more comfortable experience for pedestrians. And so that and the combination with, um. The hybrid beacon would kind of maintain fire department operations, give them, if anything, a little bit more comfort exiting. Um, exiting into the roadway because they'd have a, a signal control at that, um. That was, you know, that would stop traffic for them, um, but still, you know, improve the, the pedestrian experience in this area. Um, so just, you know, factors to consider when developing the ranking would be the potential to address existing safety issues and improve intersection safety. So, um, you know, to your, to your previous point, um, we'd look at the sort of high-impact locations first. Um, estimated project costs, the anticipated needs to take right of way, um, and what the improvements would actually do to. Improve operations and finally the project feasibility, as we kind of talked about some of the, the traffic signal control issues. Uh, and, and one other thing that, um, this is sort of our initial ranking, um. Which was the, you know, first up would be the intersection re-timing, um, I think that's just really fairly low-hanging fruit. Um, it's low-cost, high-impact, um, and it, it wouldn't, you know, require a significant amount of work on your end. And then finally, the traffic control type change for Adams Place East, just because that is the. The area with the highest amount of concerns, you have your crash history, you have your intersection delay. Um, and the potential to, again, get the developers to contribute to some of those improvements. Um, and then finally, the two intersection realignments and, um, the defi- fire department emergency vehicle hybrid beacon. Um, based on talks, I could see moving number six up a little bit, um, and switching five and four if, if that's. Um, but you know, we'd certainly be looking for your feedback in terms of how, uh, you would consider those rankings.
Thank you, Corinne. Thank you, uh, Julian. Um, Rich, go ahead. Thank you for waiting, um, to the end of the presentation.
No, just a quick one. So like some of these are pretty extensive, and I think the, the point on the state looks for like eight hours of. Peak traffic or, or high-volume traffic. If these are specifically during like a two-hour window during very peak times. Is a traffic could patrol officer an option? I know that's something that has to happen every day and, but like. That could be a, like a manual mitigation, right? No, yes, maybe.
Um, I will, I will say, generally speaking, it's really. I don't wanna speak to your town operations, um, but it can be pretty hard to get that detail on a regular basis. On, uh, for something like that. What, what I will say is that the roundabout is sort of the alternative to that, because you don't need that eight hours of traffic for them to. To prove it, it is, it's a little bit more of an upfront cost, especially with respect to permitting. Um, and, and potential land takings, although it may not be necessary, cause you have a lot of right of way there. Um, but that's, that's the direction that they've been pushing because the maintenance costs are lower. Um, and it, you know, it's. Essentially, you don't need the eight-hour, uh, warrant in order to put in a roundabout for traffic control.
Um. Okay, and some of these intersections are, you know, it's pretty clear that, okay, that's development, the develop, you know, we can tag it to a site plan and a. Conditioned development developer to cover. What about some of the intersections like on Liberty and Taylor or Liberty and. Mass Ave where there's less of a, I mean, you could say there's some development, but that's more of like, we're kind of on our own, it feels like. Is the, does the state step in with any, um, responsive, financial responsibility? Or is the town kind of on its own to do that?
You can make a request, um, there is a process to like initiate a project with the state. Um, and if that, you know, I'll say they have a bit of a ranking system themselves. In terms, cause there's a lot of municipalities that would like intersection improvements, um. But there is a process where you can make a request for the state to do an intersection improvement process. Usually what happens with that is that the town is responsible for the design costs and the state picks up, uh, the construction cost. Um, but it, you know. Given that the crash rates are, are not above state averages here, I don't wanna promise that. That'll be high on their ranking. Based on how they make their decisions.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, Cindy, go ahead.
There we go, thanks. Um, so Corinne, I had sent some questions to you folks back in, I don't know, October, November, when you guys. Gave us the, uh, the report, um, and I don't think you did much. In this presentation, I don't know if you addressed them, but I, I, can I just kind of walk through a couple of them?
Sure.
So my first question was, is there any updated crash data? Um, your crash, latest crash data, I think was through twenty twenty-one. Is there anything updated since then?
Um. I, I think at the time that you had asked the question, the answer was no. I'm actually gonna throw that to Julianne because, um, she may have checked more recently, um. But, uh, if, if we don't know the answer, I will get back to you, um, with an update for that.
Yeah. So the reason we picked twenty twenty-one is our final year, the five-year timeframe is because. Uh, where we got the crashes is the Mast dot impact portal. And they say anything. After two thousand twenty-one is still like subject to change. So potentially if we go to reconduct that analysis. They could still change that on their website versus anything before two thousand twenty-one is considered closed. And has been reviewed and confirmed, so that's why we picked twenty twenty-one as the backend.
But you do have more recent data, it's just not sort of confirmed from last DOT?
Yeah, and, and it may not be complete, I guess is, is the other issue. Um, it takes some time to kind of enter things into their, to their portal, so for example, if twenty twenty-three. The crashes look like they're way down, but it's just because they didn't get all the data entered, you know, we would, we'd, we'd hate to kind of. Have that throw off our, our analysis.
Right. Well, it might be worth, a- again, I don't know what the next steps are gonna be, but, um, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were COVID years, you know, that might make. Be fully representative, so it just might be worth, uh, having a look at the most recent data, even if it's not confirmed, I'd just be curious.
Yeah, we, we can take a look and see if there's been any major changes.
Okay, um, and then my second question has to do with the, um, the traffic study that MDM did, uh, behalf of Campanelli and the. And the DOT Section sixty-one findings, um. Let's see, my comment at the time was the green study doesn't appear to align with the October twenty twenty-four traffic study from MDM. Nor with the impacts associated with the project, so I don't know, did you folks look at the DOT Section sixty-one? Those, those sections in the sixty-one findings also got updated. I'm just curious if you looked at that at all and.
Is that, um, do you refresh memory, is that for the, uh, the ramps?
So that was for the sing- the timing signals or the signalization, I think at Swanson Road and at the northbound ramp.
At the north, okay, um, I believe we, so we, when we originally talked about sort of the scope of the project. Um, we initially, we kind of excluded the ramps because we knew that Mast dot had. A project in place for those locations, um, but I will, um. Double check to see what they're doing for, for Swanson Road. I believe we did look at it, um. It's been a little bit of a while, so I'll just make sure that we, we included, um, that for that location, but we did intentionally kind of exclude. Improvements at the ramp ends because we knew that there was a, a project already in place for that.
Okay, well, I guess, yeah, if you could true up the, the Swanson Road information, cause they are recommending some timing. Signalization changes and I, it would be good to know, I mean, if they're doing it already as part of that project, you know, then maybe that takes it off this. This plate, I just don't quite understand.
They're doing it in, to, in coordination with the ramps for existing conditions as opposed to. Um, for the, the project impacts, which is what we're looking at more when those developments get into place, but I'll, I'll, I will.
Well, I think DOT most recently said, if you do, you know, X amount of construction, a problem out of square footage, then, then you need to do those things. So if you could take a look at the, MDM and Alec can, I'm sure can provide it to you if you don't have the most recent. Um, and then my other question, and this again might be a little dated. Uh, why are the level of service estimates in the twenty twenty, twenty thirty-five no-build table fifteen-one? So different from that, uh, this is also related to the MDM traffic study, no-build, um. Section sixty-one findings indicated intersections below had level service F or E in the no-build, why doesn't this match with your report? Um, although they did use slightly different no-build years, so again, I didn't know if you married up the. The MDM study with yours at all, or is it completely independent? Cause one of the things we're trying to get at is, you know, how accurate are. The studies that we're getting relative to what you guys are looking at, so.
So I, I will say, you know, we did our own traffic counts, um, and they presumably also did their own traffic counts. Um, and if they're using a different year, um, that would also have an impact, but I guess the other thing I would say is the definition of no-build. Is actually a little bit different for this, um, study than. What you would normally consider no-build under a development study, so because we're not actually building anything. Um, our no-build doesn't include any developments. And the build is other people's developments, um, whereas if you were, if you were coming forward as a developer. Your no-build includes. Other permitted developments in the town, um, so we were looking exclusively at. Uh, historic background growth rates, whereas they presumably would have had to include other, um. You know, stu- developments that are not their own, and then the build would just be that plus their project. Um, uh, does that make sense?
Uh, kind of, because I think the next thing was that several of the intersections, um, in the MDM, I think identified lots of the ENF. Intersection level of services, and I don't think you guys maybe didn't identify them all, but. I just didn't know how closely you looked at their report, so.
Yes, especially for no-build, um, that would be the case because their no-build is including other people's developments. And our no-build is not, our, our no-build is no developments, and then our build is everyone's developments. Uh, because we're not actually building anything ourselves.
Okay, and there's some sort of background growth rate also added on to that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then just, uh, just quickly go through here, um. Uh. I think, um, the other things that just sort of came up tonight, um, I'd like to understand is. Can, what can the town do to slow the speed, um, along one eleven? If anything, I've always been told that. It's up to DOT to determine, but if the town wanted to try and slow the speed in certain sections, you know, what are, are we able to do that? Um, so that was one question. I wanna.
Um, I guess I would, you know, another, another point to the roundabout and to tightening up the intersections is those are all. Um, I guess I'd call them sort of traffic calming measures to some extent.
But we can't impact the speed limit, is that?
That's correct, you can't just change the speed limit, um. That, that's set by DOT and they're pretty. Um, without. I, they, they have pretty strict statutory and regulatory rules, so within that, um. You know, you, have, has the town already, um, implemented the town-wide reduction? Um, I know there's an opt-in for a reduced speed limit, um. But I'm not sure if it would apply to this road, but in, in any event, long story short, unfortunately not, you can't just set them. It's, it's, that's a, a statutory, um, either a statutory speed limit or regulatory speed limit set by the state.
Okay, but it sounded like you were just about to allude to some mechanism, so if that's something that can turn about.
Yes, um, so you can implement, uh. Reduce under the stat, under the statutory laws, um, hold on, I. You can, um. For like, a th- a thickly settled area, you can have a reduced speed limit, um. I don't know, I don't believe it would apply though to Route one eleven, so I, I apologize for kind of. But you could do it for like your local town roads.
Okay. Um, and then I think the question was sort of coming up about, you know, if one of the town wanted to put a traffic light in, but DOT wasn't willing to. Approve it through their normal warrant process. It sounded like there might be a mechanism for the town to do that, it wasn't quite clear on that, but, and if that's something you wanna. Get back to us on if there's a more.
Um, that would, that would need their approval, I guess that, the, the thing was you can use projected volumes versus existing volumes. Um, but, um. We have tried to get them to consider, uh, less strict requirements in other locations. Even one place where it met seven of the eight hours and everyone wanted a signal. And unfortunately, um, they weren't willing to consider that, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna sort of. Uh, that they are pretty strict with respect to the, the traffic.
Strict whether it's necessary, but also about who pays for it, I mean, um.
Um, not, so. Um. Particularly with, with respect to the Adams Place location, there, you know, with, with some development going in. I think there's an opportunity to get some private sector funding, and they would not be strict in that respect. Um, but I guess, and, and frankly, that location, even if you didn't have developer funding. If you were to go through the state portal and, and, uh, ask for them to improve that location. It would have a higher chance of being improved because it is a high-crash location, um, with significant delays and high levels of traffic. Um, but they, they usually would require the town to do the design, um. Fund the design and then they would fund the construction, that's usually how that works. I was, I was talking a little bit more about some of the other smaller projects. Those are probably less likely to get the, um, state to agree to foot the bill, but I don't. You know, I, I don't wanna make promises one way or the other, as, as far as how they'd react, that's just sort of their typical process.
Right, okay, okay, um, thank you for all your help. I mean, I hope that you guys will, uh. I don't know exactly again what next steps are, but having you sort of available to respond to some of this in the future is gonna be very helpful. We do have some more projects that are coming into our background analyses and such, so we may wanna be looking for you to update some of that. Uh, those projections down the road, but thank you for your help.
No problem.
Alec, I know that you're gonna try to move this along, but I just.
No, no, I'm chairperson, the opposite, um, we have just received a continuation request from the, uh, applicant. I've been communicating with their engineer behind. I've been communicating with their engineer behind the scenes, um, and so they will be filing a continuation request tonight, um regardless of of this.
Three sixty five Codman Hill, right?
So you, you and the board can continue this discussion as you.
All right. Perfect, thank you, Alec. Um, okay, I do have a couple of comments then, since we have a little bit more time. I'm sorry we were hurrying you along. It's 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 kind of a packed agenda as well. We haven't had much of a break lately. Um, uh, so I I rather like the idea of a of a the roundabout, like I think those are really great uh, traffic calming, um, uh, you know, ways of dealing with it, and uh, you know, especially that one intersection where you're showing it has it's a school bus stop as well at paddock, and it 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 can, it just, it always makes me so nervous watching like that right there with people just whizzing by and then pulling this bu- this bus over to let little children off. And it happens like multiple times a day, so um um, one question I had, if, can we go back to that slide that shows the the roundabout option?
Hmm.
Um, when we were, um, now let me get to it.
Sorry.
There we go, thanks. Um, so I guess when when we saw the um project um to the south here, um, an application there, um, there was, the reason that we had this multi, you know, laded turning um lane was to keep um uh like large trucks from driving towards Boston down one eleven and to give them direct access to four ninety five. Um, with, you know, so all, it's a truck turning lane specifically. Um, and so if we, if there was like um a decision to do this rotary um idea, it, how would that be controlled? I mean, would you have, would you be able to reroute truck traffic to this other?
To the roundabout?
Yeah, um, well, I don't know how it would work with the roundabout, honestly. That's why I'm saying
Yeah.
they'd have to be rerouted to across from this gas station, right?
No, so um a couple of things. Re- this is kind of shown as a, what we'll call like a little bit of a mini roundabout to keep the footprint smaller, but the roundabout would be designed essentially to one of two things, either allow truck traffic to make the circle, and usually that would involve, you know, a wider circle um than what's shown here. But also another way of handling it is that you what's shown here is a fully mountable center island. And so it's uncomfortable, very uncomfortable for a car to drive over the center island. You won't see cars driving these over these center islands. But if you are in a large tractor trailer truck, you can actually drive right over the center island in order to make those turns. Um, so they're, they're essentially designed to accommodate that um by having them go over the center island. Or or alternatively, you make the whole thing bigger and you um accommodate them that way where they can make the turns around the island itself.
And so I'm, just, this is my landscape architecture hat, but you know, there's this beautiful um roundabout that's in 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 uh Carlisle, for instance, at a very um prominent intersection.
Yeah, so this would not be planted, yeah.
Right, right, I'm I'm saying, but you know, we're, we also want to keep
Yeah.
Boxborough looking beautiful and 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 I don't know that that's like the most aesthetic um entry into our small community um would be one concern, but um the idea of it is you know, it's clever, it is a good um traffic, you know, slowing but down, but it is, um, I don't know, is there any, would there be any other way to access or exit through this other intersection where you've moved this to instead of this area?
Um, you mean Adams Place West, essentially?
Yeah, I guess it probably would not be feasible.
Yeah, I and I'll say two things. One, you do have a lot of right of way. So it it is possible to make this a larger roundabout. Um, and there's sort of, you know, meet in the middle a little bit where you have a truck apron section of it where they wouldn't go right across the middle, right? But um you have kind of a smaller inside scribed circle in the middle that could be planted and and a a mountable section on the outside of it. Um, for like a medium sized roundabout, if you will.
That's what they did, actually. They have like a cobble, like a a granite set kind of
Yeah.
around it that's all sloped so that, you know, fire truck going through could go up on a four foot like um so, you know, in our circle, if you.
Exactly, so I I guess, long story short, you know, the, if you were to move forward with the roundabout, there's a lot of different um design considerations that you you could take a look at. We show them any roundabout here, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the option that you would go forward with. Um, and you know, yeah, you you can make it look cobblestone and as nice as possible, but essentially it's, yeah, it's not gonna be your landscape architect, um, beautiful uh planted area unless you make it a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I I I also wonder how you keep them from turning to the right altogether if you're inviting them sort of to do that, so um I don't know, uh, go ahead, Alec.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, that would be a challenge to keep them from turning right there.
So, Madam Chairperson, if I could also offer a comment here, if this was a solution that the board wanted to entertain um and future applications came in, you could potentially work through a condition by which truck traffic would have to be diverted to the westbound lane, which would then allow you to to make this a more um oh, a single, the single occupancy vehicle method. Um, it would require internal redesign for the property owners, and they would have to consent to something like that. But at the time of an application, that would be a potential condition that could apply if this scenario was thought through further.
Yeah. Um, although I do want to say you'll probably always need to accommodate truck traffic going down one eleven and the through movements.
But not from these parcels.
Right.
I mean, that's, so that was just written in as as um part of the approval process, so. Um, okay, um, then the other question I have is, um, and I I know you probably didn't have the opportunity to witness this when you guys were doing your tallies out there, but there is, um, we have a pretty serious issue with uh, traffic coming and getting diverted off of four ninety five at times, and perhaps we've talked about this, I'm not really, I don't recall. Um, but um at the intersection of uh Boroughs Hill and um one eleven, um, it can become so consistent, the traffic coming from four ninety five and going uphill, that nobody can make a turn on or off of um of Boroughs. Um, I actually was waiting in line one day and somebody jammed out trying to get through there uh because they had a tiny opening and there was an accident right off the bat. Um, because the traffic is just so, it it's back to back. Um, so I I'm questioning, you know, did you guys see that or give any consideration to that intersection? Because it is, it's a pretty large problem, but it's not like every day. It's um, you know, when, you know, there's an accident or there's some reason that they need to divert, so it but it could be three times, four times a month at least that I've seen this. So I think it's enough to discuss.
Okay. Um, so I I guess, you know, to that point, it didn't necessarily show up in our data. Um. But that doesn't mean, you know, just because we didn't see it doesn't mean it doesn't happen at other times, right? Um. So.
It's such a scenic road, you know, Hill Road, for instance, like, and there's so many pedestrians and horses at times, and so you can imagine these people clipping through really quickly um down those roads, and they're not very large, you know, this.
Yeah, yeah, so is is the issue more, um I guess the fact that it's so congested that people can't make the turn onto Mass Ave, or is it that people are flying through?
I think, well, you can't, you can't, um, so I happen to live um to the south on Boroughs, and so if I'm trying to get out of Boroughs and take a left-hand turn, that is absolutely impossible. I I actually will drive down through town, come back up and come out the other way because it's it's so much easier. Um, but also like, you know, for the folks that do live up on Hill Road, that that road people do go through in in a very large quantity and and at probably expe- excessive speeds, uh, especially with all the pedestrian use up there.
Uh, um, I will say it's it's a little tricky. There's nothing like looking at it that immediately um comes to mind to how to necessarily resolve that issue. Um, but it's something we can, we can definitely give a little bit more thought to. I, you know, I don't want to say something now.
Sure.
Um, but we we can definitely um take, take a second look at that location.
That's terrific. Um, and then one last comment, there's, you know, the the intersection of one eleven and Stowe Road, um, that one, you know, I've I've spent a lot of time uh at Town Hall observing that that intersection, and um it's tough, it's a tough turn um for slower moving vehicles or larger vehicles, um, so uh, just trying to get on, um, you know, if it was a big landscape truck or something like that, I've seen them trying to get on to one eleven, and it's, it's really impossible for them to get up speed fast enough at that intersection and get across and turn into the lane. Um, so that was another question I had, um, is is that intersection, and I'm I'm saying in particular from, I've witnessed it most from from Stowe Road coming on to one eleven heading towards four ninety five, if I could make a like, just a discussion about that.
So is that, would you say the issue is it's just almost too tight?
It's tight, and I think it's, it's, uh, the larger vehicles seem to be the only ones that I'm really seeing. You know, if you have a a small car, you're able to get out there quick, it picks up, but with something that has longer, like maybe a trailer on the back or something like that, um, it can be pretty difficult for them to be able to get out um during certain hours.
Okay, to take that left turn.
Yeah. Yeah, that that was a level of service F, sorry to interject, but that did come into your.
Oh, it's already in the F range, yeah.
Well, but but the overall intersection did not.
Right, right, so sometimes, yeah, we we were focusing more on the the overall intersections, but there are certain approaches that may be below. Um. So we can, we can look at some of the geometry there. Um. Something like this is probably not gonna meet a requirement for additional traffic control, whether it's a signal or a roundabout or something like that. Um, but we can, we can take a look at the truck turning movements um and the geometry and see if there's any opportunities to kind of make that a little bit of an easier turn.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yep.
Um, board members, any other um comments or questions? Not seeing any. Um, Alec, if we, um, if something comes to people's minds uh following this meeting and want to, uh, they want to provide some additional feedback uh to Corinne and her team, um, I guess I would encourage folks to write in to Alec so that he can provide that information to them.
Yes. Oh, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, um, preferably before close of business Friday, um, as Cindy mentioned too, she had previously supplied a letter with questions and feedback, so we'll reattach that at the time, uh, as well as any additional feedback that's uh given by board members this week.
That's great. Uh, go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I just want to understand, um, I guess this contract that we're engaged with right now with Green is just for this specific task, but can we create some kind of master services agreement whereby we've got Green, um, because now they're very familiar with the town um and the roadways, can we create a master service agreement of some sort so that we can either have them on call or bring them in on, you know, an as needed basis um going forward?
So something like that would require an open procurement process. Um, you are entitled through uh through your standard engineering contract, which we have a current extension under. Um, you can sub someone out, uh, but in that regard, Places would have to select the sub consultant that they would use. Uh, we can always offer Green International as an option. Alternatively, if the the board was interested, you could request that the select board um launch such a procurement process.
I would recommend, um, I don't know if the board wants to take a vote on that, but I would recommend that we uh create that agreements that we have it in place and, uh, you know, as issues come up, you know, it won't be a protracted uh effort to bring them on board, and again, they they've done a lot of work now in the town, they understand it be useful to keep them um sort of at arms, you know, at the ready in case we need them, so. Um, I guess I I would make a motion um at this point to uh request from the select board that we in enter into some kind of master agreement um to have Green International available um going forward after the completion of this project.
Does, does anyone want to second that motion?
Uh, so don't we need funding?
It wouldn't be funded, it would just be, the agreement would be in place and we would fund it as as needed.
Couldn't we use our consulting budget out of this? Or could we?
Um, I, if I could, Madam Chairperson, uh, funding isn't necessarily the the hurdle here. Um, the the select board would need to first assess whether entering into such an agreement would be in conflict with your current engineering agreement. Um, the the funding, i- it wouldn't be a outright here's a lump sum for you to be are on call, presumably, and Corinne, correct me if Green does this separately, what we would enter into is a service-based agreement where they would provide us a rate sheet. Um, then we would use that standard rate sheet to assess a fee back on to applicants if we requested a traffic review um at the time of an application. Alternatively, such an agreement could also extend if we wanted to initiate a project, a study or a review based on their standard rate sheet or at a scope of work to be provided at the time of project proposal.
Yeah, and we would still, you know, provide a scope, as you mentioned, for any additional work. Um, so at, yeah, at that time, sort of the cost for each project would be just um determined.
Right.
So Cindy, your your motion is valid.
Structure, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alec.
Apologies, Cindy, I was gonna say, your motion is valid regardless of funding, um, but the select board is the only board who has the authority to enter into such an agreement.
Right, and I would, again, I make the motion with the understanding that it wouldn't necessarily be funded um currently, but based on what you just discussed and then, you know, a future funding mechanism could be could be arranged, but the master service agreement would just have the uh the consultant in place should we need and uh want to use them in the future.
It, isn't that, isn't that what we get from Sue? Isn't that part of the agreement that we have with with Places Associates? I mean, it, it's like a subcontractor for Places Associates, it, I kind of understood it that way, so we already have that ability.
Well, Places doesn't have traffic engineering as my understanding as a uh as a function. Um, and oftentimes, it's more cost effective to go directly with a consultant, but we I I I'll withdraw the motion for now if you wish, and we can talk about this more, but the in, my intent is to try and have a traffic engineer, and Green is now well versed in Boxborough issues, um, to have them at the ready, so.
Uh, I I'm not against that idea, because I mean, we've need, needed it in the past, I just kind of want to understand what what it involves.
Okay.
And and the other problem with it is, is remember that uh, a lot of this, we're gonna be handing the the bill to applicants.
Well, that would be a separate effort, this would really be for the the boards, um.
So our own consultant.
Yes.
Much as we carry a line for legal.
Carry a line for legal, and we carry, carry a consulting engineer, but the consulting engineer does not have expertise in traffic. So this would be a separate engineering contract.
You know, I see no problem with adding Green Associates or a traffic consultant to the stable of people we can call when we need to. I think that's kind of.
Under our consulting budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, to 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 me, that that's kind of where it belongs, and then bigger stuff belongs to the applicants. Um, they have to, uh, again, they they have to pay our engineer when we need to employ the engineer to review their stuff, so I forget what that's called, Alec, you can help me on that, but um, the chapter that allows that. Um, so no, you know, it's just another quiver in the bu- i- i- no, another arrow in the quiver, so I'm I'm okay with that. But but let's circle back on that, I mean, let's get something done here, that I I'd love to get, you know, these people kind of into the final stretch here.
Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I want to thank uh Corinne and Julian and the team. I mean, I think this is, this has been what we needed. Um, and I agree, having him in the stable, I, you know, we should talk about. Um, and I agree having him in the stable, I, you know, we should talk about what that means, I mean, I think we can always engage. Um, you know, being, working for an engineering company myself, I know just putting IDIQs in place. You know, that's, that's a, that's a fair amount of work, just to have it done, I think we can engage when we need to, I'm not sure we need the IDIQ, but like, open to the discussion, but let's. Let's have it, like, not tonight, maybe. Think, think about what we've got a little bit more.
Okay.
Can I ask Alec then to please at least investigate what it would take in order to, to make that happen? Um, if we need a vote from the planning board, you know, I'll raise the motion again, but. Um, again, I want to have it at the ready so that we're not dealing with contract issues when, in the future, when needed.
Yep, we can um, we can at least analyze our existing agreement with Places Associates, confirm with them. Um, that this is not a service they offer. Um, and if that's the case, then I'll just come back to the board and I'll encourage you at that time to, to pass such a motion.
Yeah, thanks.
I think it's a great idea actually to have this, well, just to at least look into it and see if we're covered under our consulting budget or, you know. Lock this in or get additional information if we can, because this is a real asset to our, our group here, so. Um, terrific. Any other comments from the board members at this point?
Well, my question is what's next? So how, how, how do we kind of tie this in a? Tie this together and say what's the next step.
Go ahead, Alec.
So uh, for the board, your, um, your next step is by Friday, close of business to provide me any additional feedback. On the recommendations and the presentation tonight, I've been taking my own notes and I'll be providing some as well. Um, we will return that to the consultant and I believe at that time, Corinne. You will be presenting the board with a penultimate draft that incorporates their feedback to the best of your ability. For a final round of, of notes and feedback at that time, correct?
That's correct, yeah, so we'll um, we'll take what we've heard tonight and any additional feedback. Um, we'll use that to sort of update our study, turn it from a draft to a final report. Um, and then come back to present that um, to you in the future.
Do, do we all agree in the ranking?
Uh, do you want to look at the ranking quickly before we um, go forward? What, you want to pull that up, Corinne, do you mind or?
It's funny, I'm looking at it on my screen on the side, I thought you guys had it up, but it was mine.
It's like I have it too, it's just, yeah.
So I guess there's a couple of questions that were, came out of our discussion, right? Like, is. Well, no, I guess we determined that the Swanson Codman Hill Road would be a separate.
Uh, that's why I'm curious if, if this is under the section sixty-one findings already for Campanelli and they're committed to doing it. You know, does that fall off the list? If it's something that doesn't get done until they're. You know, if they get approved and that they do a certain amount of development, which I think is maybe what, where they were going with that, so. That's why I wanted to understand that, otherwise, one might fall off the list, it might already be being done.
Well, that, that's easy.
Go ahead, Mark.
Well. I- if so. It should probably stay on the list until, until something, in- until they, we move forward with anything on that, so until. But at that point, then we will probably decide to drop it from the list and everything would move up. You, you talked about moving the fire department thing up, but. We don't know what's gonna happen there, so I kind of leave it where it is for now, I, I actually am okay with this. Although I think the Taylor Street at Hill Road can't be that expensive and if it's, but it's not a high value item either. So, I'm okay with it the way that it is.
Yeah. I think the trickiest part about Taylor Street at Hill Road is that it's a little.
Yeah, it's not ours.
Oh.
It's not located in Boxborough, but you know, if something were to come forward under the, if MBTA community gets. Asked and something were to come forward, there might be discussion with a future development project that could incorporate that. Um, some mitigation at that intersection, possibly.
That's interesting.
Could, could this um, be shared at some point with the town of Littleton as a recommendation? I mean, it's like a freebie.
For us, but not for them.
Well, I mean, freebie, you know, guidance for them that they didn't have to pay for.
So I guess, why is that, if we don't own it and we can't make it happen. Then that's all we can do is throw the information, say, hey, here's some great information that we just came up with a traffic consultant. We'll give it to you for free. I mean, that's about all I can see is being able to do with it.
Mm-hmm.
Or if a project is proposed at that Boxborough Town Line, there might be opportunity to. Incorporate some of this if there's some road improvements that are required for any future.
That they would have to work it out with Littleton though, yeah.
Getting back to the top of the list, um, so one, I think we probably put a check mark next to, right, if the Campanelli thing all gets sorted out. Um, and then two and three, I guess I'm not, I'm not sold on the roundabout, um, I get it, um, but like. And I don't know that, we're not gonna so- like, solution it tonight, but like, I think I heard there was an option to do. Traffic control signaling, uh, which maybe I, maybe I misunderstood it, but is the signaling. Approval issue on Mass Ave the same at Adams Place East as it is at Adams Place? Wait a minute, what am I missing? Traffic control type change, roundabout Adams Place East at Paddock Lane, traffic control type change, signalized Adams Pl-. Are those mutually exclusive?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. What about the signaling? Where's the, where's the intersection at uh, Adams Place West then?
So that, under, under the traffic signal at Adams Place East, you could potentially do sort of a coordinated system. That includes an exit at Adams Place West.
Yeah, you go into fourteen fourteen at West and out. Across from Paddock and that's the intersection you signal.
I guess, like, the way I'm thinking about it is, we have an Adams Place East, probably the most important thing, and then West, I think. To me, do you do something at East and not touch West? Probably not, right? You probably.
They're kind of a combined, that's a combined alternative.
Right, so to me, it's, like I, like I, I don't think that mutually exclusive thing should be ranked, I think they're, it's like traffic control type. Roundabout or signalized change at Adams Place East, right, is the, and then. And then three, and maybe it's two B is Adams Place West addressed, right? But I just, I'm not sold on the roundabout and I, and I don't like the idea of ranking. Um, mutually exclusive things, like it's.
Yeah, we can combine those into one.
Two A or two B, and, and I think also, I think I'd prefer to see a signal than a roundabout. But I get that in order to get signaling funded, there might be requirements that you might not meet.
Um, I, I, just to clarify, it's not just to get it funded, it's even to get it approved.
Oh, because it is a mask, right, sorry, okay. It's not, not ours, it's, it's.
I- is there such a thing, I'm sorry, we're, we're, I know we're past that, we're just, we're looking at the rankings, is there such a thing as a. Like a flashing yellow signal all the time and then just during peak hours, it's operating? Like flashing yellow on Mass Ave, flashing red on Adams. Which is effectively a stop sign, like, I don't know, I.
I, I, I'm, I, I don't believe so, I don't think they would, um. It's still, because as far as they're concerned, right, that you'd still require all the signal equipment. Um, and, and from what I understand, it's kind of, part of the pushback is that it's a maintenance issue for them. And it's an ongoing cost, and so, you know, even if. You know, even if most of the time it was flashing operation. Um, you'd still need all the equipment in place in order for it to be an operational signal during the peak hours. And I'll be honest, I, I don't know that I've seen that operation, um, so they might not approve it just on the fact that it would be confusing.
So, yeah, so another, uh, uh, yeah, there's another state sort of dictating how we do traffic. Of course, it's a state road, so they get to do that, but now it explains why there's all these crazy rotaries everywhere, okay.
Yeah, that's why rotaries are everywhere.
Uh, well, just kind of a little clarification for me, the, so. Obviously, then, the state, the case was made that there was eight hours a day worth of traffic. For all the signal, signalization that exists currently. Uh, on both sides of four ninety-five, and my guess is, is because all the traffic is coming and going. Onto four ninety-five, not down one eleven, is that a pretty fair assessment?
Are, are you talking about the existing signals that are in place? So I will say, I don't. You know, for some of the older signals, I don't know how long they've been in place and, and how long they've had this criteria for. They, in the past, were probably more lenient. Um, with, with respect to traffic signals than they are today, because there are. There are other types of warrants, so there's four hour warrants and peak hour warrants that. Um, you know, if this wasn't a, a state-owned road, you could consider. Um, so the fact that they're so strict with the eight-hour warrant may, maybe. You know, I, I say recent agency change, but in like, the last decade.
So how would we know, um. How would we find out whether those were permitted under an eight-hour warrant?
Um, I'm, I guess I would just look at the original documentation. For those applications.
Somewhere exists the, the, everything that points to how it was permitted and whether it met that requirement or some other requirement.
Yep.
Cause, uh, well, I'm just trying to understand, d- d- does the state, are, are, are we getting eight hours a day worth of traffic?
Got it.
Those lights now, um, or did they calculate that, that we?
I, I would assume at least at the Codman Hill Road intersection that that was, that warrant was required, because it's a fairly new.
Right. Um, and they're also redoing the, 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 the northbound, four ninety-five northbound ramp as well. So, 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 po- part of that makes me ask, that then. The eight hours worth of traffic that those lights are designed to handle, most of that does not go down one eleven.
Well, one, one other thing I'll mention is that it's not just about the amount of traffic that's on the main line. It, it's a combination of the amount of traffic on the main line and you also have to reach certain thresholds on the side streets. So you could have the traffic that's required on one eleven, but if you don't have that eight hours of traffic that's required on the side street, you're not gonna meet the law.
So the side streets meaning the other four sides of the inter- all four sides?
Yeah, they would be stop signs if they don't have volume to, that makes sense.
Alright, so, so really the bottom line ma- might be that we can't get a signalized intersection. We can only, if we, our only solution would be uh, a roundabout.
That's possible, yes.
Okay.
And unless, unless and until development at fourteen fourteen has enough volume coming out of Adams. Road, play, Adams Place.
Right, although you, you can look at projected volumes, um, but you would still, it would still need to meet that threshold.
Okay, I, I, tha- thank you, I, I just, you know, trying to wrap my hand around, head around, you know, how much traffic there is, so, alright, thank you.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, just uh, before Corinne goes, I just wanted to uh, verify, I think I had three asks. Um, and maybe I didn't make them clear, but um, I am concerned that we are getting more truck traffic on Codman Hill Road. So I don't know whether or not there's anything you can do to tweak your numbers, um. To address that, it's not necessarily, you know, passenger vehicles, but definitely more truck traffic. Um, the second one was uh, to check the Campanelli's uh, section sixty-one findings and to see whether that um. Takes care or addresses number one there, and then the third was to get updated crash test informations, I just wanted to. Make sure I was clear on the, my three asks anyway.
Yeah, it's a good point, we've had um, some recent approvals um, for applications on um, on Codman Hill. Right there, I know you can't continue to update this on a daily basis for us, but it's good, it's a good to find out.
Sure, yep.
Um, alright, any other comments from the board before we let these kind people go tonight? Alright, terrific, so uh, we will, um, you know, if there's any additional um, comments from the board. Uh, we'll circulate those to Alex to get to you and um, yeah, we'll take it from there, thank you so much, both of you for your time. Uh, this evening, um, and we look forward to seeing your next draft.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too, Chair. Okay, so Alex, there is a continuation, have they said when uh, uh, for, for three sixty-five Codman Hill. Requested, um, have they asked for a certain date?
Uh, no, just the board's next availability, um, you do have uh, more public hearings scheduled for your next meeting, so I would recommend. That this be scheduled for your first meeting in October, it will require a, a written extension agreement, but we could process that with the engineer Paul tomorrow. So you'd be looking at uh, October sixth at seven oh five PM.
Yeah, I would agree, I'd like to stay away from the next one, because that's gonna be a long one. Um, okay, terrific. Um, and you'll take care of the written um, approval with that, okay, terrific.
Yes, I do just need a motion from the board, because it's a written agreement at this stage, um, I do need a motion from the board. Um, to continue the hearing to October sixth at seven oh five PM.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, so moved by Rich and seconded by Chris, uh, roll call as I see you, Mark White.
White eye.
Uh, Cindy Markwitz.
Mark Witz eye.
Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi eye.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty eye.
And Burner eye. Alright, thank you. Um, moving on, um, we still have a fair amount to talk about, but um, hopefully we can get through admin business. Um, relatively quickly, Alec, could we pull up the minutes?
Absolutely, I'll get those up now.
Thank you. Any comments on the meeting minutes of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five?
I think I had one typo, let me just find it. Sorry, gotta bring up my version. Okay, um, I think it was line, uh. Is it the minutes from August eighteenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, maybe I didn't save them. Uh, there was just a typo, uh, a word missing at the beginning, let me see if I can find it. Um, okay, there it is, line eighty-four. Um, paragraph, the line starts with MIPA process to capture the commitments, insert the word that were applicable. Yeah, I think that's all I had.
Any other comments from board members? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Rich, seconded by Mark White, uh, thank you, um, roll call as I see you, Mark White.
White eye.
Cindy Markwitz.
Mark Witz eye.
Rich Gazardi.
Gazardi eye.
Chris Doughty.
Doughty eye.
And Burner eye, okay, terrific, thank you. Um, recently received correspondence. We have the notices listed in there. Um, okay, uh, planners report, go ahead, Alec.
Thank you, I'm sure person, I'm gonna keep this brief, because we do obviously have a bunch of things to catch up on, some things that. Would be covered typically in the planner's report, um, so uh, I will note for the board, we've received an application for site plan approval. And stormwater management permit as of yesterday morning, uh, for the properties collectively known as nine eighty-four Mass Ave. That's the Tree Masters location, um, so we'll be circulating those, those to the board shortly. I have already hand-delivered those to Sue Carter and the team for them to do a completeness review. Um, to ensure that all of the necessary application components are attached. Um, additionally, and on the same property, the ZBA uh, does have an executive sketch, uh, executive session. Scheduled for September twenty-third, um, that's their regular meeting time and Adam Costa was available to meet that evening. Um, the planning board is of course invited to attend, so for Rebecca, Chris, Cindy and Rich, real quick. Um, if you want to open your calendars. Um, if you want to open your calendars and just confirm if you would be able to attend that meeting. Um, if we hit a quorum, I'll just have to post it as a joint hearing or a joint executive session. So.
What was the day, Alan? Boom?
It's uh, September twenty-third and we anticipate it starting at approximately eight thirty P M. They do have a public hearing that has to go before.
Is that Zoom as well?
Yes, it would be entirely via Zoom.
Yeah, that that should work. Uh, yeah, I should be here.
I think so.
Yes, I can do it.
Okay, so we'll post that as a joint executive session.
Actually, I may not be able to attend, but I will try.
Regardless, better safe than sorry. But the it sounds like we're pretty much right on the cusp anyway. So we'll post that as a joint executive session. Um, and I'll have more information to follow. As I said, once Sue um, once Sue confirms to me that it is a substantially complete application. At that point, I'll turn it over to the board and I encourage you to review for the same purpose at that time.
Anything else?
That's my report.
Okay, going into community reports, uh, our committee reports, uh, Community Preservation Committee.
Uh, meet tomorrow, so.
Okay, um, design review board, nothing new to report on that. Uh, E D C.
Uh, meet tomorrow.
Busy night, okay. Uh, Magic, uh, nothing yet?
No, I went to my first meeting on uh, Tuesday morning. Two hour meeting during the day. I don't know how many of those I'm going to be able to do. Um, it was interesting. It's uh, good stuff. Um, basically, they bring somebody in to speak to a specific issue like an expert and then they kind of tell you what's coming down the pike. So they brought uh, Jeremy Koo in, new changes to the twenty twenty-four clean energy law. That are coming final stuff from Mass D O E R. Uh, definitions of small and large project. They're gonna do streamlined review now. Uh, they're gonna have a new division of clean energy has been created. Uh, one thing we gotta kind of be mindful of that that is coming. I've been reading about it elsewhere is likely to add. The state is likely to add battery storage facilities. Into the same solar, the same law that allows solar and a lot of people don't like battery storage. I guess we wouldn't particularly like it either. So something Alec, you probably have your eye on already, but we probably should stay abreast of that. And they're gonna have final regs due by March one. Um, they're gonna have draft regs filed by the end of September, hearings in September and October. And the town may adopt a process again as regards to the clean clean energy law. But we don't, we're not required to, so it's not like we have to rush for a town meeting, but we can. It's not statutory that we must. And then they're electing M A P C uh, membership. I don't know anybody yet, so I don't know what they're gonna do. So that's about it.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, water resources.
Um, yeah, I did sit in on my first meeting as a planning board member. Um, they discussed the draft report. They had the consultant from Weston and Sampson who has uh, been working on that wire report with comprehensive reports that you should all have seen by now. And I think it's an agenda item for tonight. Um, but the Water Resources Committee is asking for some feedback by their next meeting, which I think is the sixteenth of this month. Um, but I do encourage you guys, if you haven't looked at it, to look at it and I think it's important as part of our overall planning. You know, this was part of a request from the planning board to try and get our arms around water management in town and understand sort of what infrastructure is there. But it's a great document for understanding kind of where we are and um, some of the terminology. And uh, so I highly recommend if you haven't read it, but if you have, we may take some comments later tonight because I think it was an agenda item. But that was the bulk of that discussion.
Thanks, Cindy. Um, and the B L F, uh, we have a meeting coming up at the end of the month, um, so nothing new to report on that either. Um, okay, and jumping off of your comments, Cindy, general business. Uh, we've been asked uh, to provide some comment on uh, the comprehensive water resource report. Um. So everybody's had a chance to review that report. Um, it's a it's a hefty document. It's very um. There's a lot of information in it. Um, so I anticipate we might need a little time to kind of soak it in. Um, but I um, did want to just throw this out to see if there's some initial um, comments uh, that we could collect to forward on to them through Alec.
What are the asks here? I mean, they're they're asking for input. What what kind of input do they want? I mean, it's a very technical report, so.
Very technical.
To. Yeah.
I'll just comment on that. Um, so one of the things that sort of came out of the discussion was that they they made some sort of. Uh, there's five recommendations, I think, at the beginning of the report, just, you know, five bullet points. And I think um, one of the things it highlighted is that there might be some other things that we might want to see. And they may not be part of this report, but might be uh, items for future study. So um, that might be one thing that comes out of this. I mean, a lot of the report talks about groundwater basins, groundwater recharge, and then also um, you know, in addition to water quality, which the report sort of summarizes and says. There's there's appears to be plenty of recharge throughout town in the various um, basins. Um, the water quality issue is affected a lot by the fact that we have many uh, septic systems in town. And not all of them have been, you know, uh, inspected and there's potential for, you know, some to fail in the future and such. So it was more about a water quality type issue, I think, was sort of the the guts of the uh, of the analysis. Um, but they talked about, you know, what what else you might want to have studied in the future. So I think as you, you know, review the report, there might be some other things that maybe we want to have studied down the road. Um, so that that was sort of the emphasis, I think, that came out of that.
I mean, they I went through the summary of recommendations and I don't see much to comment on. I mean, develop educational materials, why not? Develop townwide water sampling program, great idea. Add to the septic system inventory, great idea. Expand the study beyond the town boundaries. The only question is, how do you do that? And identify additional properties. I mean, I'm okay with those recommendations. So I, so again, the question is, is what do they want from us? What do they need from us?
I I think one of the things that I noticed, they were not able to um, or they didn't want to project out. They've got a projection for water consumption on the residential, but they didn't, they were hesitant to project numbers for the commercial development. So I had asked about doing a sensitivity analysis to do use some projections for commercial development, water usage. Um, so that was one of the things that I had uh, suggested might be done as a future, a future item. Um, you know, they've done some build out. I, you know, I think it might be useful to look at the build out analysis because I think some assumptions. Um, you know, they're they've made some assumptions there that we might want to be aware of. And again, there might be some sensitivity analysis we might want to have done on that. Um, so things like that.
Any other comments or questions right off the bat? Okay, Alex, should we be doing anything other than this brief discussion on this or what would you advise?
Um, you know, I I heard from I heard from Mark that he at least individually supports the the various recommendations of the plan. Um, does the board uh, in seeing other communication from Les to other boards and committees that are interested. He's really drilled in on those um, recommendation sections. Um, so does the board universally agree with the recommendations or feel that any other recommendations um, could be included or should be incorporated in the plan? I think that's really the root question here.
I mean, I'm still in digest mode, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
One of the good with the like overall, the recommendations look good. I mean, it sounds like they did a very thorough job. I think we need to understand this. As a community, um, but I, you know, anything beyond what what has been said so far, I'm not sure I'm prepared to comment on it tonight, Alec. But I'm still digesting.
So I will, I will note that um, Les has given us a deadline of the twelfth. So if the board wanted to take until September eleventh, I could generate just a simple Google survey tool for you to provide me any additional feedback. I could then compile that feedback into one memo and I could release it simultaneously to the planning board and to Les. Just incorporating verbatim your feedback as provided. The the flaw there, of course, is that it's not voted by the board as as universal feedback, but it's feedback from individual board members. And then I'll just regurgitate it to both entities.
Alec, can I ask what is driving his deadline for this? Is it um, just trying to tie a bow on things? Or is it um, driven by um, you know, something that I'm not aware of right now?
Uh, Cindy, maybe you know more than me, but what he states within the letter at least is that they're scheduled to meet with the. To meet with the consultant on September sixteenth to to discuss further. Um, so Cindy, I don't know if there's another time sensitivity. I'm not captioning here.
Yeah, they're trying to wrap up the project and then make a presentation to the select board and and hopefully, you know, a presentation on a wider town basis. On on what they've, you know, what where they are today. Uh, Alec, I I was just gonna submit maybe some more comments. Uh, I can either do it through you or or to Les directly. But kind of along the lines of what I had already mentioned tonight, um, you know, maybe some sensitivity analyses to do down the road. Yeah, and also I wanted to mention to the board that, you know, we had talked a little bit about, or I had proposed a potential warrant article about marrying up the um. The water quality regs from D E P down in the zone. Two groundwater protection regs and I have talked a little bit more with the Water Resources um, Committee about that. And and I'm still trying to get my head around it, but uh, you know, I may um, be looking to do some additional research on making sure that our A P D. Um, is adequately protected and marry and the regs marry up, but there's, it's almost like a Venn diagram. The A P D is, some of it is in ground uh, zone two, some of it's outside of zone two. You know, the regs only apply. Um, to certain, you know, some apply to zone two, some apply to the A P D, but they're not comprehensive. So I'm still sort of getting my head around, you know, are there additional regs we need to to consider to ensure that we're protecting, you know, being as protective of all the water quality in town? Not just the A P D, not just the zone twos and just um, so I could continue to sort of poke at that with the with the Water Resources folks. Because they do have some knowledge that I don't. Um, but that might be an area for additional expertise from a company like Weston and Sampson.
Um, so the reason I asked about the timeline is uh, it it might be kind of, uh, well, it would be kind of great if we had like a bit of a. You know, small presentation. This is a pretty hefty report. Um, um, I know they might be up against a wire here, but like um. It it would be have been great if we had like somebody like Les come in and like present. A small presentation about what, you know, this a summary, if you will, of of the reporting. So I think it's a hundred and eighty some odd pages, so. Um, but it sounds like we don't have time for that.
Yeah, I I guess I would encourage the uh, you know, attend the uh, the presentation or they'll record the presentation to the select board and and that should get widely circulated. And again, you know, these are, if we have additional asks, we can always try to get, extend the contract with them. We could fund additional studies. Um, but I'm not sure that they have time to come back to us. They're trying to get this wrapped up, I think, by by that date.
The timing doesn't work if if the select board will get, if that presentation will be end of October. You know, that'll, that's long after next week, so.
I I understand. I'm just saying generally delivering a hundred and eighty-five page document to a planning board to absorb. It it might be better practice for us generally to go forward and try to set up a presentation so that we can um, maybe absorb it quickly.
Back off.
Um, okay.
One one thing I'll say, Alec, and maybe you have the background on this, but like. I guess Water Resources Report, like we we know already know what's happening, like with the Trumbull Well and that that whole, you know, drawing the connection to Western Boxborough. That's a like a major thing and it's, you know, frankly, a lifesaver for the town. But like, I guess I was expecting to see some kind of long term plan for potentially public water, right, expansion. Um, and I guess the report's saying, no, that we're we're okay. Um, and we're gonna be okay. Am I reading it right? Am I tracking?
Man, I think water, uh, I'll just jump in. I think what the Water Resources Committee is still discussing those kinds of things down the road. They are, you know, there are informal, folks are informally meeting with Littleton Water and with Acton Water. Um, I think there is, there are still discussions. They're monitoring what's going on with N W R A and those extensions. So, um, but that that's the kind of, you know, thing I think that we want to raise as a, you know, what about future infrastructure? That might create if we need it. And I think the water quality issue is what would push the town to look for more public water supply, right? So.
Yeah, right. And and Cindy, when I read the recommendations, I guess I don't, I mean, I can't disagree with them. But I don't come away thinking sound the sound the alarms, right? I'm gonna. And I don't know if that's really what it is. Maybe it is. But anyway, that was just kind of a general feedback.
I mean. One thing I I kind of am getting from this is the water quantity. We got plenty of water. The quantity is not the issue. It's water quality is the issue. And uh, so. I mean, that's good to know. I mean, I think we kind of knew that all along that there's plenty of water in most places, but uh, you know. Uh, the the question is, is how threatened is the water quality? I mean, anytime you have septic systems, but we we can't do away with septic systems and and uh. I don't know. I don't I I don't see where this takes us next. I guess that's the question. So I I'd be curious to see what the Water Resources Committee now, now that they have the information. You know, their their initial recommendations are pretty, you know, straightforward and simple. But I'd be curious to see what 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 the next step is now that they have this information.
Well, again, some of this came at at our request to also to get our arms around, you know, what what the water situation is. The master plan for water in town, I guess, is how we would refer to it. And if the uh, concern about septic systems failing, you know, that are older than, you know, twenty years. And and what the failure rate is and things like that. I mean, those are good topics that we should kind of put up and say we want a further exploration of what that might mean or, you know, whatever. But I think those are important topics um, that we can raise. So I think that's the idea. That's that's what, you know, and recommendations for future study is certainly, you know, a list that we can. Add to, so that's what I would recommend.
Cindy, you bring up a good point that this is just, um, you know, the this report and likely the next one that we're going to discuss as well. But um, you know, these are really excellent resources from a master planning perspective for the community. Um, you know, it's great to be able to kind of point back to these actual documents and and reference them as we kind of um. You know, consider different things in town. So, alright, um. Any other comments? I suppose we can still submit things and writing through you, Alec, again, on this topic. Um. Anything else that you need from the board members at this time?
No, I think um, my recommendation still stands. So I'll generate a a Google form by which you can send me your feedback as individual board members. I'll compile that and then send it out to the Water Resources Committee and the Planning Board as a whole. And I'll send that out by email um, tomorrow or Friday. So you'll have a week to sit on it um, with the links attached to bring you back to these documents.
That's great. Thank you, Alec, for that. Thank you, board members. Um, okay, moving on to our next item, uh. We're supposed to, um, we were reached out to uh, uh, about likewise about uh, requesting feedback for um, the Climate Action Plan. Um, so we all received a PowerPoint presentation um, and uh, had a chance to look through that. It's a a bit shorter, um, so maybe a little bit easier to digest. But again, I think we probably should invite people in to to join us in the future to review these things just a little bit more, just so that we're all very clear on it. Um, um, so I'm gonna open this up to comment from the board members. Any additional comments? So they've asked us uh, which of the actions are most relevant to our board or committee mission? So they did have some more specific questions, I thought was helpful. Which actions uh, your group could help implement directly or support? Uh, your assessment of the highest priority actions from your perspective and any additional ideas or concerns related to specific recommendations. Um, is that the whole list? I had a a I was trying to figure out what exactly was the the cap actions specifically. If it was the, there was like a a number of them in in further down in the presentation and then there was this spinning wheel here. Um, and they tried to get us to speak specifically to the wheel or?
Yes, so um, so I'll give you some initial feedback. I'll or I'll give you some. Yes, so um, so I'll give you some initial feedback, uh or I'll give you some initial insight on this process and the background on it. Um, I will note that uh right now the Conservation Commission is meeting simultaneously, so Ian and I are divested. Um, this is a project that Ian is taking on. Um, I'm actually doing the exit interview for our sustainability intern on Friday, uh who was working on this project incrementally throughout the summer. Uh, the background to that is that we also had a student team from Tufts uh who prepared an eighty-plus page uh priority action plan which produced this. Um, it was a combination of case study research as well as data analysis and public engagement um by which they sourced out a variety of climate action goals that the town could undertake and then action items uh that the town could then use to advance uh progress towards those goals. Um, this visual tool is probably the most powerful element that came out of their uh priority action plan as it helps kind of summarize. You have in the the middle circle, that is your climate action plane uh plan. Your five goals are in the purple circle uh immediately surrounding that. You can see there's a dominance of climate resilience and preparedness and that's a combination of feedback that the public gave, that that is what was highest priority to them. Um, and then as well, the various action items proposed, um and you can see how much those dominate. Uh additionally, there was energy goals and opportunities, water conservation, sustainable transportation and waste management. Um, from there, you look to the outer circle, then are those are ten actionable items which are further explained in the documents that were provided, uh but you can see that some of them are very uh actionable, for example, establishment of a greenhouse gas inventory, um uh increasing institutional capacity uh and a variety around the outside. They are in a a feedback gathering stage now, so they're not under such a a crunch of a deadline, the way we've structured this project through student engagement, internship now to Ian taking hold of it. Um, this is an internal planning document, one that we are preparing in-house, uh so we do have a little more flexibility. Um, what we've done is we've developed this Google form um through the intern to actually have some uh some data gathered to the sustainability, so that way as they're prioritizing both their goals and then their action items within those goals, um they'll have insight from whether it's members of the public, our regional partners or boards and committees as to both what their priorities are as well as different ways that they can further implement those action items. Um, so for example, um expand environmental education, uh that's something that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee might signal to the Sustainability Committee that they would be willing to partner on the goal and reach out to specifically our environmental justice populations. That's the kind of feedback um that could feasibly come from this exercise. So if the board's ready tonight, um, we can either have a free-form discussion. I can collect your feedback objectively as a board entered into this form. Or we can use this as kind of a kickoff opportunity and just indicate to the to the Sustainability Committee that they will have your responses by October, which is when I expect they're going to want to wrap up this portion of the process and then move towards December where they would pres- they would conceivably ask the select board to adopt the Climate Action Plan.
Thank you, Alec. Um, I definitely want to commend them for all the work that they've done here with this, you know, and it's pretty exciting um for someone who who, you know, believes strongly in sustainability and such. Um, I I do appreciate this this document that they're pulling together for us, so. Um, great, great, um, great plan, so. Um, opening this up for board members uh to discuss initial thoughts. Oh gosh.
I guess.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, go ahead, Rich.
No, I didn't have my hand up. Go ahead, Cindy.
We're very polite. Um, yeah, I I guess I'm just sort of, it was an over, I haven't really had a chance to dig into this. I they they've produced multiple things and I guess I'm getting a little bit too bogged down with all the things they produced. Um, and it sounds like there's a survey coming out of this to say, what are your priorities? But that the Climate Action Plan I Alec, maybe you can clarify, is it going to have some sort of final like policy recommendations that that they want to see the town um take on? Um, so if you could answer that, and then I just had a follow-up comment.
Yes, so um these action items in particular are really gateway to to specific steps that can be taken, so. Um, at this point, I would anticipate the Sustainability Committee is going to recommend all ten of these outer circle uh action items. But then they'll expand upon it as how exactly do you implement those action items? Think about it, um not, we won't take such a such a complex step as the uh as the spreadsheet we have for master plan action items, because that one's so voluminous that there are so many action items to be taken. In this case, it'll probably be more in a narrative format, um or maybe a simplified table format, but we would be looking to to actually, whether it's a policy item that could be undertaken, whether it's a capacity item that could be undertaken, or whether it's simply a staff action that could be taken um or a board or committee action that could be taken, we'll be incorporating those. So we're looking, we are looking for that level of feedback, yes.
So you kind of touched on it with your master plan and and I had the same feeling after reading the Water Resources Report. I I think all of these documents are sort of bubbling up into our next master plan and, you know, I don't want to confuse people by having this plan and that plan and all different recommendations, so I I don't know if it's too soon to be getting a jumpstart on how to coordinate all of these, you know, very thoughtful studies and good recommendations. Um, but I would like to perhaps use these to accelerate, you know, the elements of our master plan or call this, you know, part of our master plan. Um, because I don't want to um again, start off with a whole other effort, you know, just in twenty twenty-eight because the timing's not right. This is the component of the master plan for climate action, so um, you know, I'd like to see sort of a, I don't want to say simplified, but um, I I, you know, these are components that should lead up to the master plan, as should the Water Resources report and hopefully someday a housing production report and others, so. Um, I'm just encouraged by the fact that work is being done. Let's not, you know, lose steam and let's let's start to put this into our master planning process.
Yeah, um, if I could, Rebecca, I kind of want to nerd out here just for a second, so Cindy's touching upon something that I am very excited to start getting into this fall, so as always, we'll be doing our annual report and update um to the Planning Board and Select Board on the master plan progress, and this year um we'll tack on an additional fifteen minutes to that uh to that joint presentation because we will start discussing um areas that the the two boards would like to see included and where you'd like to see um a master plan uh start to emerge when we undertake uh procurement in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight uh for the plan to actually be drafted between twenty twenty-eight uh and twenty twenty-nine. Um, and so Cindy, you're you're kind of seeing it on the horizon as this planning document is actually the last actionable item that the Sustainability Committee has in the uh in the existing master plan. And in exactly as you said, this in part becomes, whether it's an incorporated document or whether it's the goals and recommendations feed into the next master plan, but then the next master plan will also inform how we use this document going forward and what stage of climate action we should be taking uh in future years as well. So uh you're you're picking up on, you know, the the next steps in this process, you know, it's it's very exciting to see this come forward and very exciting to see it feed into the master plan and start building momentum in that direction.
Yeah, and I I guess I've always been concerned that people are working in silos, so I'm really excited that they're sharing their work products with us and, you know, we're getting this kind of sort of preview of what what's coming, but we need to be doing it across all the disciplines, but this is really, really exciting, so thanks.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, um, thank you, Rebecca, and, you know, I'm very appreciative of the work that's done here. This is no small undertaking. Um, and I guess what, it would be good to have somebody come and talk it, because this is like plan recommendations. And what I'm used to in plan recommendations is, you know, I mean, there's a lot on this wheel, so it starts with me of like understanding, like what is it? Like what is expand zero emission mobility? What is that? Like, what what is? What does that look like? Would, you know, and what's the impact? Is that something that Boxborough can can do? What does it look like in Boxborough? Is that something that we can reasonably do? And what's the cost to it? What's the actual outlay? Versus the benefit that we get? And then is there, you know, what's the overarching um cost to it? Like, for example, there's a lot of talk about uh incorporating the mass specialized stretch code. And like, I don't know enough about the specialized stretch code, but you know, some things I've heard is it's great because it can drive, it it drives the conservation level of fuel and 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 uh resources and materials down and it and it's it provides for, you know, a future of net zero. The other thing I hear is that it raises the cost of housing by some significant, not insignificant percentage. And so these are all important topics. They all need to be discussed, but if it's a recommendation, what I'm used to seeing in recommendations is first, understanding what it is and then two, what's the cost? How are we going to implement it? And what's the, what are the trade-offs? And I guess maybe somebody from the Sustainability Committee can come and kind of talk to that? Because it's kind of hard for me to say, yeah, I'm buying a recommendation, but I like, I don't even know what some of these things are, right? Or what they, what it means for Boxborough.
Thanks, Rich. Uh, any other comments from board members at this time? You know, I think, yeah, I think, um, you know, again, we're echoing each other, but um, yeah, getting that somebody in to talk about that. Is it something that we could arrange for? I know we have the next two meetings are kind of already builded up, uh built, uh very busy. Uh, but you know, we are doing efforts through the Planning Board. We do continue to do efforts that are, you know, s- supporting um these moves um in the way that we deal with our applications and and um, you know, conditions and stuff and our our decisions and we're writing bylaws and stuff, so I'm I'm sure that we have uh a a fair amount of overlap here and could continue to do that, so it would be really probably most productive to just be able to talk through that a little bit. Alec, you want to give some thought as to when we might be able to pull off a a a discussion about this?
Yeah, so I I think it'll either be at your Aug- it'll either be at your October sixth or the immediately following meeting that we can schedule it. Um, it'll be very much dictated by the results of your next meeting and potential actions that the board takes, so. Um, we won't commit to a specific date right now. What I will commit to um because both this is an exercise for for Ian and and his continued development. But um what we can do is uh between Ian and I, and he'll be the one leading the presentation, we'll prepare a presentation that specifically addresses the action items, gives more narrative as to what they are. We will propose various ways that the board, if any, could assist um in the implementation of them and note any costs associated and will provide uh at minimum pros cons, but uh in some cases potentially a cost benefit analysis to certain action items as well, because that's stuff that Ian will be doing a little research on anyways, um but it's a good exercise too for him to to learn the skillset of presenting someone else's materials.
That's terrific. Um, and maybe we just tentatively hold it for this October sixth for the time being and and assess it after the next meeting. Sounds good.
That's good.
Uh, go ahead, Mark.
Uh, thanks. Um, Alec, how many people, I mean, this is the culmination of a survey, is that correct?
Um, it was a survey, it's a public engagement exercise. Additionally, there was robust case study research that was done and multiple meetings with the Sustainability Committee itself.
Okay, so but but I mean, like, you know, survey demographics, if you get percentages, the question is, is percentage of how many people? So how many people is this based upon? I'm just curious to know.
Uh, I don't have that offhand. I I don't know the numbers myself, but uh between Kate, um, who's the Chair of the Sustainability Committee and Ian, who's gotten hold of all the materials, we can answer that in the presentation.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Hey, um, so we can likely move forward on this one then. Um, sounds like we have a plan in place.
Rebecca, I just um, I had the other document, that B cap document open, just to answer Mark's question. It looks like they got a feedback from a hundred and forty residents, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Sounds about right, yes. I believe there was additional feedback, but um I know they received feedback from non-residents too, so the number you're probably quoting is specifically residents.
Yeah.
And their outreach was just via the survey out of curiosity, or did they set up someplace and?
Uh, they did a survey and then uh another exercise we did, so uh if you attended Pfeiffer's Day, you might have seen that
I was wondering.
graphic showed up at Pfeiffer's Day. Um, they had a tabletop or tabletop or easel exercise the same way I did for M B T A communities. Um, which actually reminds me, uh I do owe them uh data analysis on that, so between Ian and I too, we can uh present the results of that to you and we'll actually be rushing that out the door to give it to the Sustainability Committee next week.
Perfect. Thank you, Alec. Any other comments? Okay, um, so moving on, uh we have reports and recommendations. Uh, we have uh received both for Article One, and I don't know if this numbering is still, is this numbering?
Yeah, those, yeah, sorry, so yes, you you're picking up on something. Um, the the warrant has been reorganized, uh which is in the purview of the Select Board. Um, the Select Board, uh you'll see that the articles as they're referred to in your packet are their original numbering format. However, um you will also note that uh the most up-to-date warrant is included in your packet, and so that is the correct numbering format. Um, I just retained the numbering format of our original proposal, so I could give it to you most verbatim, so.
So as I referenced them in from our packet, um, we, it it's it's different, so the Article One, we we is actually our um uh municipal use uh bylaw or article, and so we've we've got a majority opinion, we've got a minority recommendation. The Article Five, nobody's seen that yet, so we probably want to open that up and take a look at that together. I must say, well, they've seen it, uh we haven't discussed it. Do you want to pull that up?
Sure, yeah, we can start with that. So um Article Five, um Rebecca and I touched base briefly via email. Um, I provided her with one draft, um and then she bounced back some comment and feedbacks. Uh, a quick note, so as we go over this feedback, um and I noted this to Rebecca, anything from eight point five M B T A communities down uh until we get to the summary itself, that would require action by the board as a whole, only because that is the substance of the article. So if you want to make any tweaks to this component of it, what I caution you and remind the board is, um, you have at this stage closed your public hearing. Um, so any changes you make to the article now should be non-substantive or in response to either legal counsel feedback or attorney general feedback. Otherwise, uh you would want to reopen the hearing, but just looking at the the number, the 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 stuff you've put in, Rebecca, none of it seems substantive, so I think we can go through and and take it piece by piece.
And and frankly, Alec, this first comment, um, I probably should have deleted because I think you you kind of touched on this later on in the draft. Um, so maybe it's um not necessary, but I I thought it didn't hurt to include it, so. But but you are discussing it later on. It just seemed like it might be one of the purposes. Um, go ahead.
Is this the language that we had in front of us when we had the hearing? Or has something changed? And has legal reviewed?
Uh, no, legal counsel has not finalized a review on this yet.
When will we get legal review?
Uh, probably in the next, I would say, two weeks. Uh, the Select Board is scheduled to meet and uh and approve the final warrant uh next week, so uh it'll go out to legal counsel after that.
It's going to print. So you're saying we're not going to get legal input until after this is gone to print?
Yes, that's correct, but at this stage, keep in mind, this was, this was prepared by myself, reviewed heavily by our consultant um and multiple consultants. Um, the anticipation is that legal counsel is not going to bounce back substantive comments to this, aside from maybe minor tweaks.
Well, again, I mean, the the timing is not, we should have legal review, but I thought we had that set up so that we had it in time before the warrant went to print, so. Okay.
So Rebecca, as you noted, um in the summary down below, I believe, or in the the recommendation, I did note further the the low-cost housing, um it would not be, I think, outside the scope if we wanted to include it in the purpose, but I don't think it's necessary. So uh do you want to simply delete this comment and move forward?
Well, I think, I mean, it, I I I guess I called it out. I I think it's recovered, honestly, but I mean, it might be kind of, it it is important. I, I think it's recovered, honestly, but I mean, it might be kind of, it, it is important, um, as well to, you know, we, we've discussed it a number of times that we'd like to have, you know, a certain percentage or more of, of this be low cost. Um, and so is that the purpose of this, to, to, to provide that, I guess? Or is it something that is secondary to the purpose?
Um, I would, based on what the state has said many times over, I would say it's secondary. Um, the way I would phrase it, if we were to insert it here, is to maintain, um, the town's available stock of affordable housing, um, only noting that, you know, we, we can only guarantee the 10%, which is actually below what you are today. Um, so it wouldn't be to necessarily promote and encourage affordable housing growth.
Can we modify Item D there? It says promote a range of housing choices, including, um, affordable, uh, you know, housings that meet the Affordable Index or something, and Item D on that paragraph above. So promote a range of housing choices could be added to that, including a percentage that meets the affordability index or however we phrase it.
Isn't, isn't this also, isn't this included in 858?
Yes, but this discussion is specifically in the purpose of the, the article, this forward section.
I mean, it's pretty clear in 858, it's required.
Why, why, why muck it up? It's right there.
So it's, it's primary or it's secondary, in my opinion? You know, if it's in purpose, then it's a primary, um, goal. And if it's secondary, then it's kicked down the road a little bit.
But it's a shall be established.
It's a shall, right.
It's, it's a requirement. It's, these are requirements. So I don't think we have to say it. I mean, why? I mean, what, what does it get us to say it? It's already in here.
And it also says that if there's an approval by Mass Executive Office of Housing to indicate a higher amount, that shall be required. I mean, these are shall requirements.
Yeah, up to the maximum permitted.
Yeah, I'd like that.
Like I said, I started reading this, that was my first comment, and then I got to the end and I saw that it was, that felt addressed. But my question was, does this feel like it's a primary goal or it's a secondary goal? Because if it's primary, then it should be in the purpose.
Uh, I think it's a secondary goal. I mean, the primary goal is to comply with the state and the secondary goal is everything else. And frankly, we have plenty of affordable housing already, it's just not deed restricted. So, I mean, how? This says it, 858 says exactly what it needs to say, what you want it to say. I mean, you want to put it in there, I don't care. But I mean, I, I just don't want to have this get kicked back by legal.
You don't want to accidentally make a substantive change that could cause an issue.
A range of housing choices. I mean, that's what we wanted to promote, a range of housing choices. Included in which is the requirement for affordability, 10% at a minimum. Starts at 10 and shall increase up to the max, maximum permitted by law. How many ways do you need to say it? I mean, that's, that's pretty clear right there. Up to you.
Well, it's already deleted, so we might as well just move forward. I, I, I did, I'm, I was, I came into this not willing to argue it. I just, I, I told you my process. It was the first thing that came to my head in a comment, so.
Solar bylaw, um, roof line shall not exceed, to, to, not exceed, sorry. So, um, what I, what I took here, um, so I took feedback from the first meeting where we discussed the, the first draft, uh, the regulations, um, it was noted that, uh, that we didn't want this to contradict the roof mounted solar energy systems. Um, and so the way I built this section and the way this section works is that the roof mounted solar energy systems can exceed the two-story thresholds, but the building itself cannot exceed the threshold. So that's the interpretation.
My comment was, um, was shouldn't we just defer to the roof mounted solar energy systems definition and bylaw? So that we're not potentially, um, contradicting it here?
So this doesn't, this doesn't, this wouldn't contradict the, um, the roof mounted solar energy systems definition that you have. This is just clarifying that the threshold still exists for buildings in the district.
It, it is a little redundant, right? You have building height above, right, two, two stories? I, I can't see you didn't scroll up the whole thing that.
Yes, it is two stories as listed above.
So maybe that last sentence, roof line shall be not exceed is superfluous, I think, is Rebecca's point.
I think that would be fine if you want to strike it, because it's, it's clarified up above. Um, it's just up to the board. I'm, I'm fine with striking this. It's non-substantive, in my opinion.
I mean, I would strike it because it, it sounds like you're trying to add something, but it's already above in the maximum stories.
I'm fine with that too. You can strike my, my comment.
Uh, we.
Are we, would that 10% just due to like, um, what our consultant has said? Like, or, or I, can we do a minimum of?
I think we can say a minimum of, yeah, that's, that's fine. It's just framing it a different way. But regardless, it has the same effect, so a, then, yeah.
Getting laid, Alec.
And, yeah, and then I just made that good catch spelling error that I had over here.
Okay.
Uh, Alec, not to, you go back there one second. I don't know if the T is capitalized.
Uh, do we need to define bicycle, bicycle storage per above? Um, if you did want to define bicycle storage, I'd recommend you do that separately, because then you might be getting into a discussion around, um, design and type.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yep, and yes, you are correct. This was a definition provided by someone else and it definitely has an old town's name on it.
On, um, C above, hold on, and 8.4, you've got 859, sorry. Uh, the Design Review Board, um, shall review applications for site plan approval within the MCMOD and provide feedback to the Planning Board. We need to say more there or, um, I guess, we want design review as part of the process, but is that sufficient, just feedback? Um, advisory, a written advisory opinion, I think? Something that I'd like to say something a little more substantive than just feedback. Maybe written, written advisory opinion?
My recommendation to the board, as we discussed it during the public hearing, was to keep this thin. Um, the original way I had proposed this was actually lengthier, but it included terms like administrative in nature. Um, and that's because it's been made very clear that yes, we can, we can have the Design Review Board look at these things, but we can't present to the Attorney General that for any reason, um, the Design Review Board would be able to recommend denial of the project, because that's not the authority of the Design Review Board in this case.
Understood, but feedback is so.
We just do a written recommendation?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Or provide a written recommendation to the Planning Board in a timely manner or something. Should be, there should be some specificity about during the site review process or whatever.
You got, uh, two, two does there in front of the Planning Board?
Can we say prior to the close of the public hearing or something, rather than in the timely manner? Is that Rebecca?
That's better, that sounds better to me, that this.
Prior to the, prior to the close of the public hearing.
So just to clarify, the interpretation on this will be that the, the Design Review Board can provide feedback up to the close of the public hearing, but we would not be able to interpret this that the Planning Board would be able to keep the, to keep the hearing open until your feedback is received. I just want to clarify how that would need to be interpreted.
I think that people know their lanes and they can probably get this done in time for a hearing.
Yes, and I, I apologize. I don't mean to direct that anybody, anybody, but the Attorney General, when approving these bylaws, does go back and watch these recordings.
Yeah, okay. Anything else on here, Alec?
So, um, I know the definitions, Alec, you were sort of reluctant to include them, but, and we don't usually use them in the bylaw, is that correct?
Um, we had already struck the definitions we did not think we needed.
Right, but these are in here, but they're not currently used. But the idea is that if they, if the, um, we, well, actually, we, yeah, we don't use any of these per se, do we? Or do we? Did you check that?
But I, at this stage, to strike a definition that we've proposed at the public hearing, that would be a substantive.
No, I want to make sure that these terms are actually used in the bylaw above. So have you checked it for that?
I believe they're all in this bylaw, Cindy.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, if I remember correctly, we struck two definitions during the public hearing, and I think that was for the, the reason being that they weren't actually used in the bylaw.
And you, did you edit the top and like kind of our standard format?
Yes, yes, you had provided a couple tweaks too, including the, or take any relative action there too. Um, which is why I just struck it down below.
Okay.
So subsidized housing inventory is not used above. For instance, I'm just going, I'm just doing a word search quickly.
I, I don't think area median income is either.
So I'd like to see them inserted somewhere. Is it, you shouldn't define things that aren't actually being used. None of these are, that's why I asked.
I mean, so these are the definitions that our consultant, who has passed several of these bylaws in other communities, is telling us we need to have. I think we just need to keep them.
Yeah, it, it's harmless to have definitions you don't use. It's, it's, um, uh, redundant is not the right word. It's, uh, it's prob- it's unnecessary, but it's, I don't think it's harmful.
I think it causes confusion.
I think you should incorporate, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, um, I'm, I'm done. I just.
I think they should be used.
You think if you don't have a, a place that it's referenced, right?
Yes, I think, uh, I'm just, you know, you could insert them. I just, I, I thought you would have gone through that.
Sorry, as of right is in this bylaw, because I looked for that one, because I was thinking, shouldn't it say by right? But we reference both right and as of right in this particular bylaw. Are the other, and MBTA is definitely in there, right? So it's the EOHLLC, that's not, and it's the.
So, EO, it, it is an 8.58, it is, is defined Executive Office of Housing Level Communities. So why don't put the acronym in there? And then in that same 8.58, you should put in the area median, you know, what area median income subsidized housing index. I think you should be able to work those in there.
Yeah, you can take out the, the full spelling, just put.
Right.
Yeah.
Make it smaller like that.
Make it less understandable in the actual paragraph unless you're the definition.
Fill it full of alphabet soup, which is.
It's clearer in every other respect.
Or in parentheses, you could put it.
I was just going to say the same thing, Chris. Could you just do?
Yeah.
And, and take out the definition, just do the, the letters in parentheses after this?
We can do the parentheses here, that's fine. We will not be striking that definition, because it's intentionally worded, so that if EOHLC changes its title, your bylaw then automatically refers to whoever the new title is, which that has just happened in the last year.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that works then.
So can you?
We need a period.
Sorry, go ahead.
Is there a period there? No, feasibility. Okay, gotcha.
So the SHI definition is, you can pull that from the, um, you know, EOHLC page, and you can pull AMI from the, you know, and just work it into that? Or do you want me to, I mean, can you just work it in there?
Sorry, what you just had, the EO8, that needs to go after the word communities, not economic. Because it's that body making an economic feasibility analysis. There you go. Sorry, you were saying Cindy?
Um, I'm just trying to come, I, I don't want to do that on the fly, come up with verbiage that in 8.5.8, that includes the area median income and the subsidized housing inventory. Just in 8.58, just add a sentence that says, uh, units that qualify, you know, by the appropriate area of median income, you know, will be incorporated into the subsidized housing inventory or whatever. Just get, can you put together a sentence there, Alec? I just can't do it on the fly.
I'm, I'm very reluctant to do that, because at that point, we're creating new sentences. We're adding new things to the bylaw. This is the bylaw that was approved at the public hearing. This is what should go to Town Meeting Board.
Well, you shouldn't have definitions that aren't referenced. Unless it's somewhere else in our bylaw.
Well, they're in there. The board approved them at public hearing. That's what we have.
Alec, it's sloppy writing. I did, you know, we just need to be, you know, we get ourselves in trouble when we do this kind of stuff. So I just would prefer, but.
Can we, um, so to keep ourselves clean, we could go forward with this. And if we need, we can just put on a list of cleanup. There's a plenty of cleanup we have to do along the way. I know I hate to be proposing cleanup before we even get something approved, but that's what this is, is cleanup. I mean, I agree with you, Cindy.
You're assertive.
It's not, it's a little sloppy, but it's not gonna, I'd rather, I'd rather have it just be what it is and get it approved, and then we can always come back to it.
I, I think we are stuck at this point with it. Um, I did just search the bylaw. It's not in there at all. Um, so we're going to have to correct it, I think. There, there's no reference to it at all in this, this bylaw?
No, there, there probably isn't. We did a simplified language up here.
Again, I don't want to write it on the fly, that it really should be in there.
Okay, so no other comments in here? Any other board comments on this? Did we vote? Yeah, we voted this unanimously already, yeah.
Yes. Which I'll also note, it's not incorporated here. Um, but you have also received a unanimous recommendation from the Housing Board as well. We were successfully received that last Tuesday evening.
Okay. Um, next steps on this, or can we proceed to our next one?
If, uh, we can go ahead and proceed to the next one. I will hit save on this one and I will incorporate it to the written warrant, uh, tomorrow.
Perfect, thank you, Alec. Um, so Stonewall, I'm not even going to reference the article number right now.
Yep, Stonewall.
Stonewall. Okay, team, any comments on this one?
Hang on, I hadn't read this yet. Who wrote, Rich, did you write this recommendation?
I wrote the recommendation, yeah. I wrote the recommendation, yeah.
Okay, any other comments?
In here.
Um, can I ask about Article Two? There's a vote that in there, but I don't think we voted because that hasn't had public hearing yet. So wasn't sure why that was in there with a five zero vote. I know we talked about it, but we haven't had the public hearings. I don't think we can make the recommendation yet.
Which one are we referencing, Cindy?
I'm sorry, Article Two?
The footnote change to the dimensional regulations, correct?
Yeah, in town center.
Yes, so that will read in your warrant, that will read that the board defers its recommendation to the town meeting floor in anticipation of a public hearing on September fifteenth or October fifteen, September fifteenth.
September, yeah.
Yes, he's right the first time.
So you're not gonna have the five zero vote in there?
Yeah, because you you can't, by law, you can't take a vote until the public hearing. So that'll just have to read that it's deferred until that date.
Okay, well, can you make sure that gets pulled then?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, um, any other comments on this topic of reports and recommendations, or shall we move on?
Um, I do just want to get some guidance from the board. So initially I had asked the minority and majority writers for four to six sentences. Obviously, these are more robust. This is what I would typically see in a planning board report. Are the board, does the board just want to, did you just want these verbatim into your uh recommendation for majority and minority instead of doing a separate written report? Because I think that's fine, that that gets it in there. Um, it's just a little more robust than what we typically see for a recommendation in the warrant.
I'm fine with them just being a recommendation. How did other board members feel?
I feel like that fits just to get it all out there and in there.
Yeah, that's fine for me.
Oh, you mean the Article One Majority Minority Opinion?
Yeah.
Is there separate documents in the folder?
Yeah. Okay, as long as the board is fine doing this as opposed to a separate report, um, because if we do, this ensures that it gets printed in the warrant. Everybody receives it as opposed to when we do the separate report, of course, they're getting it on the floor a couple of days before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So I will I will put these in. Given the sensitivity around this article, I'm not going to do any format changes. Um, I will give them to I will give these to the select board verbatim in their warrant.
Thanks, Alec.
Yep.
Uh, Civics Academy.
All right. Um, so this is a quick one. This is one of the ones I noted. This would typically be covered under a planning or a planner's report. Um, the Planning Board has been invited uh to participate in Civics Academy under the land use umbrella. Um, so last year when Rajon hosted this for the first time, it was pretty successful. We got a couple of new volunteers in town out of it, which is always exciting to to have, but it's a learning opportunity for people to come learn about what different types of government do in Boxborough specifically. Um, but uh what Rajon and I are asking is for the Planning Board to put forward one member of the board who's going to attend our night. Um, let me just double check the calendar. That is going to be you see, uh, that will be sorry about that, everybody. I should have had that set aside, ready to go. Uh, that will be on Thursday, September twenty fifth, and the same person will also collaborate with me on a PowerPoint. So a couple of slides to just kind of cover what the Planning Board does, what their role is, um, and then be there to help answer questions the night of as well.
We have a volunteer for that position.
I won't be here, so I can't do it.
Um, food for thought, if you're looking for people. Um, last year we were on such a tight crunch. I did not ask, and I did receive feedback that I should ask for the board to put someone forward. But uh it was two years ago was the last time we did this. Um, at the time I selected Rich because he was the newest member to the board. Um, if I could, I might volunteer Chris for you only because it's an opportunity for him to get out in front of some of the faces and for for people to meet the newest member, but obviously left to the discretion of the board and sorry to throw you under the bus there, Chris.
When did it again? Because I might need to be in Chelmsford.
Uh, it's Thursday, September twenty fifth in the evening.
How, when in the evening?
Uh, let's call it smack dab in the middle, like five thirty, six o'clock.
I I I will need to be at the Chelmsford Children's Chorus until six thirty, so.
Too bad. Thought I had a good out.
Yeah, I well, yeah, a ten year old can't drive herself home yet, so.
Alternatively, if the board members are not available, um, of course, we can just compile a couple of slides and Rebecca, I can run them through you to see if you want me to make any changes and we can present those slides on behalf of the board, but uh leave it to your discretion if you want to have a representative there.
Okay, thank you, Alec. Um, folks, just give it some consideration and and Alec will take this offline. We'll talk about it a little bit more if you want.
Sounds great.
Okay, um, where are we? Um, response. Okay, so we received a routing sheet for six twenty nine Mass Ave. Uh, this is not um our special permit. This is in front of the ZBA right now. Um, uh, so you've all had a chance to get to look at, I did ask that Alec go ahead and um provide that to everybody so that they could review it and um the ZBA would like to see if we have any feedback to provide. Um, and so this is our chance to do that. So if there's any discussion around the six twenty nine um special permit proposal for that we can share with the ZBA and Alec, I'm assuming you'll compile that for us.
Yeah, absolutely. I have a running notes document that I compile. Um, I will just kind of probe here and see if we want to draw it out. Rich, did do we want to kind of get into the the nuance that came about and why the special permit is here versus specialty food shop?
Sure.
So um, this application has previously been supported by the Economic Development Committee, the EDC. Um, as you remember, was hosting a business improvement grants program, and they made several awards to existing businesses as well as one new proposed business. Um, this was that new proposed business and continues to be. And so initially, when Divya, the business owner, had applied, she had received designation as a specialty food shop. Um, but due to just miscommunication clerical, whatever we want to call it, um, the the substance of alcohol or the concept of serving alcohol only came to to the forefront at the end of the process uh when Divya first inquired about actually getting her ABCC permitting through the Select Board. Um, at that time, Ed did change his opinion, noting that the inclusion of alcohol uh elevated this in his opinion from a specialty food shop to a restaurant. Um, and further noted to as it was noted to the applicant that uh the alcohol beverage or ABCC, I forget their full title, actually has a designation very similar to specialty food shop, which only allows uh for the retail sale of beverage, not for service on site. Um, and so for those reasons, uh Divya ultimately chose, rather than appeal Ed's opinion, she chose to pursue a special permit for a restaurant. Um, and so the concept you're seeing is kind of percolated from there. I've spoken with the EDC about the fact that, you know, I think there are some quick tweaks that could be made to the definition of um specialty food shop if the board wanted to consider um alcohol as being allowed at a specialty food shop. Um, in my read of a specialty food shop, and I can say this now that hasn't been appealed, you know, I I actually take a more liberal approach to it. I I think you can make a strong case that um that a specialty food shop could serve liquor. Um, I think it has to fit all the same criteria where that needs to be produced locally or made on site of some sort. Um, but the the crux of it is that the definition today really focuses on food. Um, and so that was a topic of discussion for the EDC. I think we had about a thirty minute robust discussion around it. Um, and ultimately kind of landed on it. It might be something for the Planning Board to take up at a future time. But in the meantime, Divya has applied for this application, which your feedback has been solicited from.
Yeah, I mean, fundamentally, I'll just sort of add on. This is this should be, I mean, in my opinion, this is very supportive of the bylaw. Um, it's it was a specialty food shop. She had approval to do that. The only difference now is she's going to be serving alcohol, which then causes it to be a restaurant, which requires a special permit. So um, but for the alcohol, this is unallowed by right use, and you put the alcohol in this restaurant, we can as a board decide if we're open to changing that. I think the bylaw, I think the definition today for specialty food shop includes beverages, but it Alec, if I'm correct, because I think we talk about it's a cafe, and we can pull the definition, but it just doesn't say alcoholic beverages.
Yeah, that, you know, now that now that the appeals period has passed, I can say this more publicly. I did not agree with Ed's opinion on this case, but his opinion matters, not mine in this regard. He's your zoning enforcement officer. Um, but so, you know, ultimately, we're we have the interpretation we have today, which is that your current definition um would not be flexible to alcohol. I did not agree with that opinion, but that's not my place.
I I have to admit that when I reread the specialty food shop, I never interpreted that to mean onsite consumption. Um, so if we're going to try and clarify that or allow for that, um, and differentiate it somehow from restaurant, because I always assumed that was sort of a takeaway, you know, type of a retail establishment such as a cafe or bakery prepares or sells food items, the majority of which are prepared, which are freshly prepared or baked on site. It doesn't talk about consumption of any anything on site. So I guess I would ask that maybe you need some clarification if that was what you were going for. Um, just on that particular issue, I guess I also have questions about this is not a site plan approval application, but there's really no information about water use, wastewater generation, traffic, any of the things that we would normally look at. And I don't see anything in the application that even goes near any of that. Is that information that you've gotten, Alec, that hasn't been shared or?
So our Board of Health has worked out a lot of uh water and wastewater consumption information, water and wastewater consumption. Um, where wastewater generation and water consumption are not triggers for your site plan approval. Stormwater generation would be, but in this case, um, she's not modifying the parking flow, the circulation, not contributing to the to the square footage and any capacity on the site.
Do we have um information about hours of operation? Are they expanding hours?
That is a good question. Uh, she does not address it in her narrative or her application document. Um, I would, does the board want me to leave that as a note for the ZBA, a request that the ZBA clarify the hours of operation for the establishment?
Yeah, I don't suspect it's gonna be rowdy, but if it is um alcohol, there's like, you know, there is um residential um development across the street from it, so um, might be good to just get that information.
Yep, um, I will say off the cuff, I'm very familiar with this application because I've been working with Divya um separately since the the Economic Development Committee first heard her proposal. Um, you know, my anticipation is we're looking at uh earlier evening hours, um, similar to Craft Food Hall closes, I believe, at ten o'clock. I believe this would close earlier. Um, the way Divya describes it is she's following a European style coffee shop model um where they do pastries and coffee and espresso beverages in the morning and shift to wine service in the afternoon and early evening. But uh, of course, she'll be more clear and more robust in her presentation on the twenty third. So I will ask that the ZBA clarify hours of operation in the permit decision.
Hey, board members, any additional comments or feedback to share with Alec?
Does this fall under the, and again, I'm just looking through the site plan approval regs or the bylaw. Um, does this fall under the exemption? Uh, that's construction alteration or expansion of a building with a gross floor area less than five hundred square feet? Um, or less than ten percent of the existing gross floor area, does any of that apply or is it exempt or does it just not apply because the exterior of the building is not being changed?
Uh, it doesn't apply because there is no change to the gross floor area. So nothing in the construction results in a change to gross floor area of the of the building. Um, and further, there is no exterior alteration. If she was suddenly raising ceiling heights, then potentially, but I I don't believe actually in this district even that triggers, so.
One thing I might um also suggest that um the ZBA asks about is um there was discussion, I think, what was it? It was some forum that we were on together, Alec, um, where they were there and I met them for the first time, which was lovely, and um they um had talked about maybe the desire to uh move outside a little bit, uh set up bowl chairs, uh maybe take over a couple of um parking spaces to set up something outdoors, which sounds lovely, but um I that would be good to understand too if if um, you know, if this use can move outside. Um, yeah.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. Um, to give you initial planners feedback too. So it's actually a very pertinent question. It's not something that we've really discussed, but um I and just about any planner across the Commonwealth will tell you that here in Massachusetts, um, as we all learned during COVID, uh, outdoor dining that would occupy parking spaces and areas should be reviewed at least on a cursory level by the Planning Board. Um, of course, if she was just occupying the existing sidewalk spaces, that's a different story, but should she in any way um want to leverage outdoor dining that leverages the parking lot, um, your board would receive at that time at least a a simple site plan submission for consideration of acceptable areas to accommodate.
Thanks, Alec. That is good information to have, but I do know that they have, I do have a couple of cute little cafe style tables and chairs outside um their facility right now, um, not in the parking space on the sidewalk. So yeah. Um, so it'd be good to know if 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 um people can go outside and enjoy a cocktail, um, you know, just throwing out there.
Yeah, no, good feedback.
Anything else, board members?
So I'm just curious, I gotta go look at the special permit, but they have to look at traffic flow, right? The special permit criteria? Yeah.
If there was a modification to it, yes, that would percolate at the time, but as of now, there's no modification.
Well, this is a new use, so I guess I'm just, yeah, that it's okay. It's in there. It's in their list of decision criteria, so. Well, they should address it, as is the utilities and such, so.
Alec, um, when is the ZBA meeting again?
Uh, September twenty third.
Okay, so there's still time if somebody bubbles up any other questions or comments through Alec to share with uh the ZBA if you want to do more digging around in documents and whatnot.
Yeah. As well as board members, of course, you're welcome to attend the ZBA meeting. We will now have an executive session later that night with the ZBA too. So if anyone wants to sign on early, go for it.
Okay, so this will be earlier than?
Yes, this is the special permit that will precede the the executive session.
Okay.
Thanks, Alec.
I'll just say that if I could just this, you know, this particular applicant, um, you know, she was an applicant in front of the EDC. She did get a grant. Um, the grant is a small, tiny, tiny fraction of everything she's putting in both personally and financially. Um, you know, she's a she's a very enterprising uh applicant and has an interesting concept. And um yeah. Good stuff, but we'll see.
Any other comments, folks? Okay, you know what time of the evening it is then? Does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh. I heard Mark White, did you have another comment there, Rich?
No, I just made a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do we have a second then? Let's do that. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion about adjourning. Rich?
I just had a comment on the agenda, future articles for consideration. We didn't talk about that. Um, we're going to get past this town meeting in October, um, but I think we probably need to start talking about what fall town meeting looks like, and personally, I'd like to get back to the Mass Ave solution. Um, so anyway, we didn't talk about it, but
We didn't. You're right. I've been having Alec keep it on the agenda just so that we can talk about it as needed. So sorry, I jumped over it because I think I'm, yeah, tired.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, me too.
I didn't think we had anything going, but um, but we'll keep it on um, as a future topic, Rich, um, it it's been a running thing that we've had on for the last couple of months at least, um, so Alec knows to keep it on the agenda for us, okay? Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, um, I'm gonna go roll call as I see you, Chris.
Uh, Doughty, aye.
Uh, Mark White.
White, aye.
Cindy Markwitz.
Markwitz, aye.
And Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzardi, aye.
And Burner, aye, um, thank you all so much.